Also, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Oh.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, November 9, 2023 Citroen Playboy B B. Kelly at the Select Board of the Pier Room in Town Hall. It's on the move and we all know that kind of stuff. This is never going to end for us, right? Can be hired forever. So we have a closing agenda, Mr. Secretary.
Okay.
I'm a favor.
Hi.
I'm waiting on Mr. McClay. I have not heard that he's still coming, so traffic's going to be horrible.
Oh, it's horrible.
Coming from the West End is not easy either, so. Continue public here, Disciplined Administrator Review and a special permit for mixed-use building and a stormwater permit in the Village Center in the District of Green Bush Gateway, District New Brickway, 61 new driftway. Hi, come on forward. Let us know what's going on.
You hear everyone?
Yes, just.
The record Steve Gard, the applicant, this is the project boss, David Keller from Architect. We all know.
On the way we are.
So since we last met, we have had the successful appointment of Susan Tedeschi and the personal representative of the State of John Tedeschi. We have received a draft decision from Karen, who, as you can see from 36 pages, we have till it on that decision. It has been reviewed by myself and by the team. We have a few comments and Karen incorporated our suggestions and we are here tonight to, I believe, review that decision.
Okay, so we have a busy beginning. So I'll just kind of raise the volume, which is one of the applicants. Then we'll hear from our peer review, which is Mr. Chesley. Then we'll hear from our top player, Karen. She'll give the warning that will be added to the public hearing online. Okay?
Perfect.
So what would you like to tell us that's moved, changed, anything else?
Nothing, nothing has moved or changed since our last meeting and it was just a matter of preparing the decision so that we could review that decision. We are satisfied with the decision as of right.
Mr. Chesley.
Uh, pretty much the same. I mean, there wasn't anything new submitted to review. Last meeting, we discussed things and the board discussed things, so I don't have any more to add at this time.
Karen. Uh, the only new piece of information submitted was the contestment for the public benefit. And so that was big, they did cars for the sidewalk from the end of property line to the Drew driveway. So that's reflected in the public benefit. I subtracted that cost from 177.5 to get the 133 for the public benefit for the cash donation, well, the cash contribution for the pier and dripway conservation car. That's, and you know, I sent you all the first page, as I sent to Mr. Guard, the first page, how it would be written as the applicant and the owner. Uh, that was all after the probate stuff was determined, so you know, we're all in agreement. Town Council is in agreement with that. That's a perfectly fine way to say, to list the owner and the applicant. So I think we're ready for the draft decision.
What do you do? Go from it from the floor. So this is a long decision, so we'd like to keep secrets.
Okay.
Okay, so take your weapons for life.
I want to make 12 in 2021. One, on July 21, the applicant, John Tedeschi, and owner, Mr. John Tedeschi, can change the given spiling notification for a special permit, major site plan review, and stormwater permit for mixed-use building project in Village Center in the District of City Zone bylaws, section 580, 750, and 770. The applicant included, but is not limited to the following. A, cover letter dated July 2022, application forms including attachment 83F and stormwater permit form in Little D. P, filing fees and virus list. C, site plan for mixed-use development, 61 new dripway, assessors parcels 53-3-2A, Cituit Mass dated July 13, 2022, by Morse Engineering Group, eight, consisting of eight sheets. D, architectural rendering and architectural plans for mixed-use buildings, 61 new dripways to mass by Axiom Architects, dated July 2022. Consisting of sheets A 101 to 107 floor plans and building elevations. E, stormwater permit application, town of Cituit Stormwater Bylaw, section 3.2050 in Stormwater Regulations, town of Cituit Stormwater Bylaw, developments, 61 new dripway, Cituit Mass assessors parcels 53-3-2A dated July 14, 2022, by Morse Engineering Group. Two, the property that is the subject of the application is composed of one parcel, parcel is lot 53-3-2A, and it is 34,700,700 square feet, all of which covered. The parcel is frontage and access to old dripway, public way. The parcel has frontage on old dripway, public way. The property is currently improved existing commercial structure. Three, the project is located in the Village Center and Cable Point District, VCN, zoning District Greenwich, Dripway Gateway, District G D G, and New Dripway Transit Village Subdistrict, NDTV-VCN-BTNTV. For the zoning bylaw in effect for this project is filed approved by the Cituit Committee at the town meeting on 9/19/2022 and the Attorney General on 12/15/2022 and posted to the website in December 2022. Five, the project imposed by the applicant consists of 22 of 20 and then 22 residential
Yeah, there's a checkbox over there.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy.
Residential units, is it 22 or 20?
It's 22.
Okay, that's it. Sorry. Twenty residential units, 6,450 square feet of general office slash retail space in one building. The mixed-use building, M U B, will have 6,420 square feet of retail office space on the first floor, as well as 22 residential units. The M U B will have one, three-bedroom unit, eight, eight two-bedroom units, and 13 one-bedroom units on the first, second, third, and fourth floors. There is a total of 32 bedrooms. There will be five affordable units. Six, the M U B building is a four-story building with a fifth story for amenity space and the elevator stairwell projection. The building has a maximum building height of 39 feet, eight inches to the midpoint of the roof from the average grade plane, which is less than the maximum height of 40 feet as set forth in the Cituit Zone Bylaw. Seven, there are 41 total exterior parking spaces provided. This includes two handicap spaces on the east side of the building. The project requires 40 parking spaces. Parking is governed by section 760.8 of the Cituit Zone Bylaw for parking in mixed-use districts, table two, and requires one space for one bedroom unit, 1.5 spaces for two bedroom unit, and two spaces for three bedroom unit in a multifamily of mixed-use building as the site is in VCN District. General office, retail, and mixed-use buildings requires one space for 500 gross square feet. Eight, section 760.7 does apply as the proposed use is mixed-use and residential in the area. Done. The property of 61 new dripway does require a pedestrian frontage overlay zone for section 580.2 of the Zone Bylaw. Both new dripway and old dripway require pedestrian frontage zones. Buildings fronting on the designated street have ground floor limitations, including ground floor areas reserved for retail, restaurant, publicly oriented and personal services, office repair or maintenance services, residential and other non-residential uses are allowed to have access at the street line by an entrance that leads to the upper floors. Residential and non-residential uses not oriented to the public access are allowed on the ground floor when the use is within a building, frontage on the street, and step back a minimum of 50 feet from the street line. And the residential use will not have an adverse impact on the continuity and vitality of the pedestrian-oriented street front use. The project meets these requirements as the board is of the opinion that there is adequate retail commercial space on the first floor and a 60-foot required as the math. Ten, in the VCN-G D G-N T V, a mixed-use building is allowed use by right for section 420 of the Cituit Zone Bylaws and it allows building type per section 580.3 with the design standards of section 750 of the Zone Bylaw 11. The base residential density in the VCN-G D G-N T V Subdistrict per section 580.4 of the zoning bylaw for mixed-use building is 16 units per acre by right and 36 units per acre by special permit. The proposed project is 12.76 units round to 12 that are allowed by right and up to 28.7 units that are allowed by special permit. 22 units are proposed on the site, which requires a density bonus of 10 units. A special permit is required for 22 units to include certain public ground improvements are made by the applicant and will provide benefits to residents and businesses in the project. The VCN District and surrounding area eligible public benefit improvements can include onsite or offsite infrastructure improvements, streetscape improvements, open space improvements, amenities not otherwise required under section 5752. Public parking spaces are additional affordable units beyond the number required for development. As a public benefit, the applicant proposes to install a continuation of the concrete public sidewalk approximately 141 linear feet, built to the town of Cituit Standards from the end of 61 new dripway property on New Dripway to the Eastally driveway of the Sky Sale property on the dripway with a handicap ramp and landing tied to the radius of the granite curb on the east side of the driveway. The approximate cost of the public benefit improvement is $34,500. The applicant proposed to grant an easement to the town for the portion of the existing town walk located on the property, the long old dripway, as a density benefit. However, as the existing walk is in a pedestrian front zone, the board will notice does not constitute the density bonus benefit. Regardless, the applicant has committed to still provide the easement. As a second public benefit, the applicant has agreed to provide a contribution of $133,000 to the town to be used to, for repair, maintenance, reconstruction, and associated engineering of the pier in the new drip, in the dripway conservation park, which is the need of a fair maintenance as identified as an open space and renovation claim. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town right next to the construction. The funds will be placed in a town account and the expenditure thereof shall require the approval of the town administrator, the town planner, and planning board, all of whom must confer. If all of the funds are not needed for the pier, the planning board shall be requested to identify and approve a new purpose or use of the remaining funds in accordance with section 580.4, C2 of the Cituit Zone Bylaw. Twelve, section 580.4 also has a minimum bulk standards for dwelling sizes. Two plus bedroom units are required to have 900 square feet of usable wall space. A one-bedroom unit is required to have 600 square feet of usable area. The project has one bedroom units with usable area of 685 square feet minimum and then two bedroom units with a usable area of 920 square feet minimum, both of which meet the bulk standard. Thirteen, no public realm standards are required for this project as no new streets are being created. The project proposes to relocate one existing curb of the 61 new dripway and replace it with sidewalks confirmed in the public private way. A pedestrian crosswalk is required by the zoning and is provided. Fourteen, five affordable units among the 22 residential units are required for this project. The affordable units are distributed throughout the proposed project. Three affordable units are one bedroom and two affordable units are two bedroom. All of the affordable units are defined so that the exterior is indistinguishable from the market rate units. The applicant has indicated they will use Metro West Collaborative Development as a monitoring agent for the affordable units. No other information has been submitted for the affordable units at this time. The applicant requests a waiver to allow the remaining information to be submitted after the project is approved. The affordable units must be able to count to a retirement subsidized housing inventory as applied with the local initiative program, like 760 point C M R 56. Fifteen, the applicant was referred to meet, was referred to meet with the Design Review Committee, DRC, and subsequently met with the DRC on several occasions to discuss this project. The DRC recommended the planning board move ahead with the special permit process in a recommendation memorandum to the planning board dated March 202023. The DRC indicated their recommendation is contingent of the review of the following prior to the building permit being issued. Detail of exterior materials with an emphasis on the exterior and trim details and review of the locations of utilities, mechanical equipment. The DRC also noted that they should be certified to install majority of the HVAC equipment on the roof and that the front quarter coat should be revised so as not to be approached past the setback line in new dripway. The updated architectural plans by Axiom Architects dated April 202023 show that quarter coat is no longer in the setback. The DRC noted that the item on new dripway is not informed by 0.4%, but they felt it was negligible, unnegotiable variation and acceptable in accordance with the Zone Bylaw. The DRC also noted that the average height of the building on old dripway is 33 feet for 7.4% of facade versus the required 30 feet in the 12.5 to 37.5 zone. The DRC felt the design made the most sense in context of the overall building and the main gable forward slash parallel to the street shields, some of the roof decks and utilities belong. The DRC recommended approval of the current design to the planning board. The DRC noted the elevator penthouse at Cool Park, it seemed the maximum of 40 feet in building height, but they exempt from the height standard for section 750.5 A slash two on C. However, the applicant did make an effort to reduce the size and location of the elevator penthouse to reduce its visual impact. The design meets the criteria set forth in 750 of the Zone Bylaws with the exception of the building setback slash height. For the bylaws, the building, a building with 0 to 12.5 feet, the street of the street shall be no more than 25 feet in height and between 12.5 and 37.5 shall not be, shall not be more than 30 feet in height. The planning board agreed with the DRC that small variances from the plan, from the bylaw requirements were offset by improved overall design of the building and main gable. The overall height of the proposed M U B building is 39 feet, eight inches to the midpoint of the roof, which is below 40 feet and complies with the bylaw. Sixteen.
Ian. Karen, on that, the DRC noted the elevator penthouse, I think, it's in the middle of the paragraph, almost in the dead middle of the paragraph. Thought I heard it.
Head house.
Head house.
Head house.
Head house, I'm sorry, okay.
It says elevator head house.
No, I changed it to head house.
It says head house.
No, it says head house.
No, my thought is says head house.
I'm a head house. In red. And other ones says.
I'll change. I'll change that.
Sixteen, a mixed-use building, M U B, as is the proposed project includes lot standards and design standards found in section 750.6 including a minimum lot size is not required. Street frontage of 50 feet is required. Project test 407.71 feet of frontage on the dripway and old dripway by. Lot depth is not required. The front yard built to zone, setback is zero, minimum 20 feet, maximum. The project has a 5.2 foot setback on dripway and a 17.5 setback on older depth. Minimum side yards 10 feet, the project has provided 36.4 feet. Minimum rear yard is 20 feet, the project has provided 131.2 feet. Outdoor amenities space coverage requires 20% of the lot. The project has provided 20.5% of the plans as follows. There is common yard of 1,450 square feet on the north side of the building. Two, there is an outdoor dining terrace of 1,363 square feet in front of, in the front on the old dripway side. Three, there is rooftop amenity space of 4,320 square feet. The total amenity space is 7,133 square feet. The outdoor amenities space is, in accordance with the requirements of section 752 of the bylaw, is a common yard and garden P S private open space and a rooftop terrace of private open space P S and publicly oriented space P O P S. The building height conforms to the height regulation set forth for an M U B of 39 feet, eight inches from the average grade plane to average height to the E and H of any building with a pitch roof. The top roof elevator projection is not counting to 100. The required normal street facing wall is 60 feet and the maximum width is 100 feet under 750.5 feet to D. Vertical modulation and articulation, no street facing building elevation can be wider than 100 feet without a special permit. The project has provided 108 foot width and therefore a special permit is required. A street facing entrance is required and has been provided. A maximum building footprint allows 20,000 square feet. The project's first floor footprint of 9,985 feet is less than the maximum amount. Seventeen, the M U B has general design standards found in section 750.5 including more than one principal building is allowed on a lot of the building lot dimensional standards are meant for each principal building individually. The project only has one building on the lot. All of the project's principal buildings and accessory structures are located outside and it requires front side or rear setbacks, except as otherwise permitted. The build to zone occupancy is measured as a percentage of the width of street frontage. The primary build to zone occupancy shall be no more, shall be no less than 50% of the front trip. Project is 53% of the front trip. Additionally, as the lot is a corner lot, the star of the facade, basically the second of the street is placed in a secondary street build zone, secondary street build to zone. 75% of the project is in a secondary build zone. The project's lot is a corner lot. The front facade of the building is parallel to the street right of the way. The building is retracted to allow clear sight distance, clear sight triangles utilized as outdoor amenities space. Mixed-use buildings, 12 and 25 feet, are required to be set back or stepped back from the street right away. The project is set back 5.2 feet from the front property line on new dripway and 17.6 feet from old dripway. For setbacks of 0 to 12.5 feet, a maximum height of 25 feet is required. For buildings to set back 12.45 to 37.5, a maximum height of 30 feet is required. According to the applicant, the setback, step back is exceeded by 0.7% on new dripway and 7.4% on old dripway. The DRC felt this was acceptable as the overall science criteria in the Zone Bylaw. The scale of the project is visually compatible with the site and considerable. The zoning bylaw, building articulation standards have been met by the project with the building that is greater than the building's height and width designed to read as a series of small buildings with varying articulation. The project's street facing building elevation based on new dripway is 100 feet, exceeding the 100-foot standard, therefore a special permit is required. Horizontal modulation and articulation are required as the project's building is three stories and follow. The front of the building is visually articulated over four stories with overhangs, balconies, awnings, canopies, and prominent fortresses. The rear of the building is visually articulated over four stories with balconies to an overhang on the first floor. The attic is stairwell, cubilis, and railings for visual articulation and function. Street facing buildings besides are required to provide service relief through doors and door canopies. The project has provided door canopies. Facade transparency is required for mixed-use buildings. Windows shall be evenly spaced along the side. Windows shall be lowered while activity glass and facade blazing shall fall between the height of 2 feet and 12 feet. Facade placing requirements are only applicable to the front of the side spacing of street right of way. The project meets the requirements with windows spacing, facade placing on the first floor with 2 and 12 feet and low reflectivity. The project roof pitches for the majority of the building are 10 to 12 and 11 to 12, but the shed roof is 312 where 212 is a minimum. The hip roof is proposed at 10 to 12 and 60 to 12, which means the 3 to 12 minimum requirement. Project meets the required roof pitches. Exterior treatments are provided by the project. Exterior treatments will be synthetic materials intended to provide the walking character of traditional building materials, i.e. cedar shakes and flatboard. The exterior will be white color. There will be corner boards, crown molding at windows and other trim line. The roof will be articulated asphalt shingles in a medium dark brown, a sloped roof, and doors and flat roof area will be E P D M or T P O roof and in gray or black. The trim will be PVC. Balcony rails will be white PVC and the denim will be composite with a look of wood. Gutters and downspouts will be present and windows will be acrible. Architectural elements are continued from the front to the side of the building. The proposed building has textures and patterns. The project is visually compatible with the surrounding buildings and exterior treatments provide characters to the project. Traditional materials are provided that continue around the sides of the project visible from the street. Eighteen, development site standards include section 750.8 are met, including project site and system one building. The project site does not include any existing proposed, proposed right of way. The project's mixed-use building is a permitted building type in this district. A minimum of 50 feet of frontage of a publicly accessible street whereby the access to development is provided. Development block standards are not applicable. Site landscaping is provided by the project and plantings are arranged so as not to obstruct the vision of the exit path. Parking must be located a minimum of five feet behind the front facade. Project meets this requirement. There are two handicap parking spaces located on the east side of the building. A screen is required where parking is visible from a street, from a public street or sidewalk. A landscape screen is provided to screen parking from the street along new dripway and marginally along old dripway. A driveway servicing site is provided by new dripway and is 24 feet wide. A second egress is provided to connect to old dripway and it is 12 feet wide. New public utilities will provide as underground utilities. An outside trash storage area is provided with a dumpster inside the fence enclosure. The loading area is not on the front facade. It is located to the rear and east of the building. It will be screened from view by the parking string. Bicycle racks have been provided at a minimum required rate of 10% of the total automobile spaces, four bike racks, four bicycles racks, spaces are required and six spaces are provided. The six-space rack, bicycle rack is provided at the front east corner of the building. Nineteen, sustainable site design is required in the VCN District for section 751 of the Zone Bylaw, such that stormwater management shall conform to best management practices as described in the Oklahoma Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook. For the project, a pre-developing hydrology is maintained by infiltrating stormwater in underground chambers and having some curvys pavement for the patio and porous pavement for some of the front entry pavement. The project's post-construction stormwater peak rate and volume of runoff is not to exceed the 1 to 10, 25, and 100-year 24-hour rain events. Stormwater best management practices are required and needs those best practices through use of deep some, putty catch bases, a proprietary stormwater treatment unit, and full subservice infiltration. The project partially minimizes the curvy services through the provision of The project partially minimizes impermeable surfaces through the provision of only the required parking is provided. The total impermeable area on the site is twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-four square feet. And the total of disturbances thirty thousand, thirty-four thousand square feet out of thirty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-seven square feet. Site greater than eighty percent T S S removal has been provided. Adequate recharge has been provided. Twenty. A landscape plan is required for all submissions except where waived by the planning board. Which plan should the greatest extent possible utilize native plants. Your own plants listed as invasive or prohibited, or prohibited by Massachusetts shall be used. And existing invasive plants shall be removed. A project landscape plan has been provided in which the native plantings are reasonably proposed. Moreover, the lawn area in the front yard is minimized. And fertilizing use and screening of the parking area from the front is been provided. This requirement has been met. Twenty-one, mixed use developments are required to provide access from parking lots to a public sidewalk into the primary building. As indicated in section seven sixty point F, point eight F two of ways. The project has divided a walkway connection from the main block into the building to the existing sidewalk. In the right of way of New Driftway and from the rear covered entry to Old Driftway. Twenty-two, section seven sixteen parking, parking has been provided. Has been provided per the zoning by law. Forty spaces are required and forty-one spaces. The parking includes two spaces for one three bedroom unit and two spaces per unit. Twelve spaces for eight two bedroom units and one point five space. Thirteen spaces for thirteen one bedroom units at one space per unit. Thirteen spaces for six thousand four hundred fifty square feet of commercial area at one space per five hundred square feet. Two handicap spaces are provided along two electric vehicle E V charging spaces. The third E V charging space is also one of the two handicap spaces. So, so there is an accessible E V charging space. A backing up area for parking extends into the front setback. However, the board agreed it was not technically parking and has minimal impact on the front setback. Twenty-three, a memorandum on traffic assessment for sixty-one New Driftway. Was prepared by Vanessa Associates dated seven twenty-two point two. Additional traffic information includes transportation impact assessment. Proposed mixed use development sixty-one New Driftway by Vanessa Associates dated November twenty twenty-two. Vanessa's response to planning board comments of January twelfth twenty twenty-three dated two ten twenty twenty-three. And Vanessa's response to the player from peer review taken two ten twenty-three. Chappelle Engineering Associates LLC. Review the traffic information for the board and provide comments which the applicant addressed. Through submission of additional materials. Chappelle has found their comments have been addressed with the additional submission and conditions provided. Twenty-four, situated zoning by law section seventy-seven point six sets forth a standard of review. Approval of proposed site plans which require proposed developments which are of a size that may have significant impacts. On neighbors, on neighborhoods. Mixed use buildings require a site plan review by the planning board in reviewing application planning boards. Required to assure to a degree consisting. With the reasonable use of a site of the purposes committed by the regulations of the district in which the land is located. All of the follows. Section seven seventy point six. A site plan approval standard A. Protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive. Methods of utilizing the site. Finding, the site is currently used as a cut care business site. The proposed closed redevelopment will modify the site if allowed uses in accordance with the zoning by law. This standard is, or is not met. When, is met?
Yes.
Yes.
Is.
Is, okay. Twenty-five, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard B. Traffic safety and ease of street, uh, ease of access at street and highway entrances. And exits of driveways taking account of traffic following rates. Site distances and distances between right way entrances. And exits and near entrances, exits and nearest existing street or highway intersections and times as people. Finding, the proposed, proposed project is located at the corner of Old and New Driftway. The proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, being requirements of seven fifty, point eight and seven sixty. Access to the site will be provided with a new percut in New Driftway. The applicant has demonstrated that there is capacity on New Driftway and Old Driftway to handle the traffic from changing. The site from a pet can facility to a mixed use development. The applicant has demonstrated there was adequate site distance. Any queue of traffic leaving the site will be contained on the site. The driveway along New Driftway is relocated further east to provide for the better traffic safety for both the project. And adjacent to the site. This standard.
Yes.
Is.
Is.
Is met. Twenty-six, section seven six, seven seventy point six point C. Site plan approval standard C, safety and adequacy driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking. And loading sites, minimizing glare from headlights and light intrusion. Sufficiency of access and service vehicles such as electricity, gas, mobile telephone. On any rubbish removed in order to provide these ambulance or other routine or emergency vehicles. Finding, the proposed project will have its own separate off-street parking, being requirement of section seven fifty point eight and seven sixty. Access will be from a new percut onto New Driftway. The access off New Driftway is twenty-four feet wide. There is a secondary one-way exit from the site onto Old Driftway. There is a walkway to reach, to reach the side at Old Driftway and New Driftway. The applicant has demonstrated the site has sufficient access for service and emergency vehicles. Headlight glare should not again issue as there are walls, fencing. And screening to the adjacent property. Off light fixtures will be used to minimize glare. This standard is.
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 Met. Twenty-seven, section seven seventy point six D, site plan approval standard D. Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage, refuse and other waste. Resulting from uses permitted on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution. And of fire plant facilities on site. Finding, the project proposes to connect to the existing sewer service in Old Driftway and access to the water main located in New Driftway. The water and sewer studies provided by the state of Massachusetts. Indicate there is both sewer and water capacity in the public way and sewer systems and that individual connections. Must meet deep dwelling requirements. All units will be individually metered for water. The building will have fire sprinklers, fire protection. The existing hydrant by the new Driftway driveway will be moved every place with a new hydrant. There is a fenced in dumpster area for trash which will be emptied on a weekly basis on a frequently as necessary. This standard.
Is.
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 Met. Twenty-eight, section seven seventy point six A, site plan approval standard F. Adequacy of service in stormwater and snowmelt runoff within and from the site including by not limited to. All walkways, driveways, buildings, parking and loading areas. Finding, the proposed stormwater management system for the project consists of the subservice recharge system for the proposed building and jobless. Minimal snow storage area is provided east of the building to the north edge of the parking lot. The board engaged Chesney Consulting Services to evaluate the adequacy and accuracy. Morse Engineering Company Inc.'s stormwater report and data as well as the efficacy of the design. Chesney Consulting Services submitted a detailed, detailed written comments. To the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Morse Engineering Company Inc. Provided responses, revised reports where requested and updated site names. After further review by Chesney Consulting Services, the applicant was determined to have adequately addressed the comments and recommendations. Assuming stormwater management system is built as designed. The applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan and operation and maintenance plan. That ensures that the project will be managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter during ongoing operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion concentration control plan that has been reviewed by. Boards of peer consultants. The board deemed acceptable with the conditions provided. The review of the stormwater management system of the planning board's consulting engineer. And their approval of this site for a review and special permit eliminates the requirement for special. Requirement for a separate stormwater permit under. Stormwater general by law and its regulations for any work that can form, that conforms to the project. Gregory J. Morse P, Morse P has certified that the drainage system will result in post-development runoff characteristics. Including peak flow, total volume runoff and water quality runoff to be equal or less than pre-development runoff characteristics. This standard is.
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 Met.
Well, would you like to give up number one?
Number twenty-nine?
Sure, twenty-nine. Section seven seven zero point six point F, site plan approval standard F. Adequacy of provisions made to protect against toxic or hazardous materials or oil discharge or loss. Resulting from corrosion, accidental damage, spillage or vandalism. For measures such as spill control provisions in the vicinity of fuel delivery points. Secured storage areas for toxic or hazardous materials or oil and indoor storage provisions for corroitable or insoluble materials. Finding, the site is not within the water resource protection district. There is no, there are no toxic or hazardous materials proposed to be stored on-site. Or no oil storage or discharge. Oil discharges are expected to the standard D.
Is.
Is met. Uh, number thirty. Uh, section seven seven zero point six point G, site plan approval standard G. Minimizing the volume of pack of fill, the number of trees of six inch caliber or greater removed. The length of stone walls removed, soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, the proposed project disturbs the entire site of thirty-four thousand seven hundred twenty seven, seven hundred twenty-seven square feet. But relatively minor grade changes are proposed, therefore. Uh, there is minimal cut and fill. There will need to be topsoil stripping and various structural fills will need to be brought in to accomplish the grading. Relping and no significant rechange. No existing trees are proposed to remain on site. This standard.
Is.
Is.
Is met. Thirty-one, uh, section seven seven zero point six point H, site plan approval standard H. Minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Finding, the site does not consist of any scenic views from publicly accessible locations and therefore project complies with this requirement. Number thirty-two, section seven seven zero point six point I, site plan approval standard I. Parking areas shall be adequately buffered and shaded using native ventilation. Parking lots within ten or more spaces. With ten, parking lots with ten or more spaces shall be planted with at least one shade per tree per space. Of a caliper of at least two and a half inches E B H, uh. With each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas and visually degrading elements such as dumpsters and loading docks. Shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion from public ways and residentially owned or zone areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas by wood fences and dense native evergreen hedges of five feet or more. At time of planting shall be utilized. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting included lighting on the exterior of a building. Or lighting in parking lot areas shall be arranged to minimize glare and light spillover to neighboring properties. No outdoor light shall be located more than twenty feet above the ground. Finding, the project consists of two driveways, one on New Driftway and one on Old Driftway designed to service the mixed use building. The old Driftway driveway is a one-way exit only. Forty-one parking spaces are provided. Shade trees meeting minimum size requirements are provided mark proposed adjacent to the parking area. Fences, fencing provided is six feet to provide screening. Exterior lighting has been arranged to minimize glare and light spillover to adjacent properties. Thereby meeting the requirements of the bylaw. The standard.
Is.
Is. Is met. Number thirty-three, section seven seven zero point six point J, site plan approval standard J. Safe, functional and convenient pedestrian, bicycle and where practical, where practical transit access and continuity. Of the pedestrian bicycle network within the property and to nearby pedestrian bicycle. Facilities and trip generators. Finding. The surrounding area provides safe, functional and convenient pedestrian access. There is a sidewalk located on New Driftway and Old Driftway providing access to Green Bush and the train station. Sidewalk on New Driftway is proposed to be extended by the project to the true driveway. A six space bicycle rack is proposed. There is a walk connection in the site to the sidewalk. This standard.
Is.
Is met. Based on these findings, the planning board finds the stormwater permit, site plan review and special permit in the village center and neighborhood district. Meets the requirements under the village center and neighborhood district. Section five eight zero, seven five zero, seven six zero and seven seven zero. As the project will be in harmony with the general purposes of this bylaw. Meeting the requirements of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty. Dash A and it will not have a greater detrimental impact on the neighborhood than a conventional residential development plan. And is designed with consideration for public health and safety. Consider.
Oh, favor.
Uh.
Any discussion?
Oh, excuse me. You carry away, you started.
Bullet. Davis or. In the last. Um, sentence thirty-three. I just, if we drop something there, it says there is a walk connection. She said crosswalk or, or is that, not sure what that's supposed to mean.
Walkway.
There has to be a connection from the walk in the site to sidewalk.
Yeah, so what, what is a walk connection?
You say the crossway.
So from the patio in the front to the sidewalk.
How about if there's a walking connection in the side sidewalk, walking.
And then on seventeen. Um, just in seven, it's beginning by people first.
See, before we go there, Greg pointed out his reference to the drone project as opposed to the sky sale. Doesn't matter to me, but earlier we talked about our sky sale that this is now, this thirty-three it says for.
I'll pass sky sale.
Whatever, whatever, it doesn't matter, right?
Um, there's a bullet, I had a second bullet item on page seven. It's the D R C belt. He can start to be better. I would, I insert that the D R C belt is finding for degrees.
I don't know where you are.
Mixed use buildings twelve point five.
Okay.
Living, very last sentence. I told her that.
Oh. Which will be the second board on these seven. I got it.
Yeah. Um, and then still on number seventeen, uh, date six. Second bullet's the all of the project principal buildings. It really is just a single building, right?
Alright, so I'm gonna say the principal building.
Yeah, the principal building.
Beryl? Okay.
Second, second.
Oh, favor.
Uh.
Alright, I need to move stuff to the. Uh, I'm starting. Based on the files of fact and testimony provided at the public hearing, planning board's stormwater permit. Site plan review and special permit in the village center and neighborhood district sixty-one New Driftway. Side for the following conditions. General requirements.
One, all construction work shall be done in accordance with, one, plans submitted by Morse Engineering Company, named and titled Site Plan Proposed. Mixed use development sixty one driftway, assessors parcels fifty three dash three dash two A to Mass. Consisting of twelve sheets dated July thirteen, twenty twenty two, with revisions through six twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Two, architectural plans by Axiom Architects consisting of a colored rendering, floor plans for mixed use building. A one first floor plan. A one O two, second floor plan. A one O three, third floor plan. A one O four, fourth floor plan. A one O five, rooftop amenity. A one O six, building elevations front. A one O seven, building elevations east and south. A one O eight, building views. A one O nine, step back section diagram. A one ten, step back section two dated July twenty two. With revisions through June twenty twenty three. Three, stormwater permit application, town of Citewatt, stormwater bylaw, section. Three twenty point fifty and stormwater regulations for proposed mixed use development sixty one new driftway, Citewatt, Mass. Dating July fourteen, twenty twenty two, with revisions through June thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Four, sewer system review for sixty one new driftway redevelopment, Citewatt, Mass by Weston Sampson dated. February sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Five, water service evaluation. For sixty one new driftway redevelopment, Citewatt, Mass dated February sixteen, twenty twenty three. Six, lighting plant for sixty one driftway by Visual. Eight in ten nineteen twenty two, revisions received by planning office through seven five twenty three. Seven, landscape plan by Sean. Apich, landscape architect dated seven thirteen, twenty twenty two, with revisions through. Six twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Eight, estimate for sidewalk in sixty one driftway from parking lot to driveway. Nine, memorandum on traffic assessment for sixty one driftway by Vanessa Associates dated seven twenty two, twenty three. Transportation impact assessment, proposed mixed use development sixty one driftway by Vanessa Associates stated November twenty twenty two. Vanessa's response to planning board comments of January twelve, twenty twenty three, dated two ten, twenty twenty three, and Vanessa's response to review dated. Two ten, twenty three. Final building elevations must be approved by the town planner prior to issuance. Issuance of building permit for performance to submitted material. A copy of the approved point of conditions must be kept on all onsite at all times during construction. Two, with this site plan review and special permit requires approval permitting or licensing and any local state athletic agency. Such required. Approval permitting on licensing, it being the condition of the town of Citewatt. Planning board of board approval of the site plan review, the V C N special permit, including but not limited to approval of work by the board. Uh, the Board of Select, the Select Board, and the Department of Public Works, D P W. In all building rights of a, including new driftway, construction shall be. Shall meet all applicable state and local laws and regulations, including but not limited to those of the city. W, Department of Building Department, Board of Health, Planning Board, as well as the Massachusetts D P at State of Lincoln. All necessary currents and hurdles must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Citewatt bylaw. Four, the applicant must meet the current. Applicant and its successors in interest. 或者是shall meet the current applicant and all its successors in interest. This site plan review and special permit shall last within two years, which shall not include such time required. Pursue, pursue our own determination of an appeal under General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section seventeen. From the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has is has not sooner commenced except the good cause. Or in the case of a special permit construction, if construction is not begun by such date except good cause. The planning board may extend said period with clause shown when receiving a written request from the applicant. Prior to expiration of said period, which shall which request shall provide a detailed description of the good cause necessitating an extension. Of how clearing may be required. Five. The total number of residential dwellings, dwelling units on the site shall not exceed twenty two. It will be thirteen one bedroom units, eight two bedroom units, and one three bedroom unit. Five of the twenty two units will be the four of the units. The total number of veterans on the site shall not exceed thirty two. A veteran is defined in accordance with Title five of the State Sanitary Code. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, M A A B, requirements must be met. All units constructed at the site shall be under rental conditions. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement. From the planning board for the site plan review and V C N special permit. Within ninety days of the expiration of the appeal hearing and this decision being final. All conditions shall be spread on the plan prior to endorsement. Seven, storage of fertilizers and pesticides is not allowed unless they are covered or contained. Eight, no vehicle washing is confirmed on site. Nine, units in the building shall be numbered outside and on a map in the building lobby for identification, fire protection, and emergency response services. Eleven, gates are not allowed at the entrance or exit now or in the future. Eleven, the crosswalk across the new structure shall be ten feet wide and must comply with the standards at the M U T D C. This must be on the plan prior to endorsement. Waivers and special permits. Twelve, a waiver is requested from seven fifty point five A point three point B. Building step back and step back standards to allow a building height of thirty point two feet. In the twelve point five foot and thirty seven point five foot zone of new driftway with thirty feet is allowed resulting in a nonconformity. Uh, or tenths of a percent. The design review committee recommended to the board that this differences was negligible. On old driftway, frontage, the average height is thirty three. Point zero inches, seven point four percent of the sign versus the required thirty feet. In the twelve point five foot to thirty seven point five foot zone. The D R C recommended to the board that the design made sense in the context of the building as the main cable is extended forward for aesthetic reasons. And adds to shield some of the roof deck and utilities they want. The board grants or does not grant standard.
Grants.
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 Grants this waiver. Thirteen, a waiver is requested. From section seven fifty four point four and seven fifty four point five. Of zoning bylaws to allow the monitoring agent and other affordability requirements for the affordable units to be submitted after approval. And prior to application for the first occupancy permit, the board.
Grants.
Grants. This waiver. Fourteen, a special permit is needed under section seven fifty point five B point two D. To allow a building wider than one hundred feet facing the street. The proposed building is a hundred eight feet. The board.
Grants.
Grants.
Yes, Rebecca.
And.
Grants.
Sorry.
Steve said this, okay.
Yeah. I'm confused on that one.
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it, it's, this was, this waiver was, and special.
Yes.
Grants.
Grants.
The board grants the special permit. Utilities, parking, traffic, and street improvements. Fifteen, maintenance and repair of the driveway and parking areas, groundwater management sites, site utilities, snow removal lighting. And landscaping shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Sixteen, all partners, parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on the plan. Forty one surface parking spaces include two handicap space, two handicap accessible spaces occupied. Three, electrical vehicle charging parking spaces occupied, then in parking by the building to. Beside residents only except the handicap accessible and T V parking spaces, all parking is limited to spaces shown on the plan. Seventeen, no underground irrigation systems are allowed. Towns, water distribution system are in any manner with municipal water in accordance. With the policy made effective by the Select Board on October eighth, twenty fourteen, and reapprone, reaffirmed by the Citewatt Water Commissioners on May twenty sixth, twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied. By onsite sources or private water suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Eighteen, the applicant shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the labor board. As its agents to enter upon any land. And carry out such surveys and inspections as may be necessary and place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts to verify the layout design. And construction work in the special permit plan are satisfactory and conform to town specifications and the requirements of the planning board. Nineteen, independent inspector or inspectors contracted or employed through the town shall perform the required construction. Inspections according to section nine point zero of subdivision rules and and regulations and as other ones defined herein. All required inspections shall take place and be inspected by the inspector, including water and sanitary sewage facilities. The inspector shall be approved by the town planner, the D P W, and should work under the direction of the town planner. The cost of these inspectors shall be paid by the owner. Written reports will be submitted to the applicant and the planning board in a timely manner stating results of any and all required inspections. During construction unless more frequent reports are needed. Forty eight hours notice. Minimum advance notice is required for all inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection of the bottom of the excavation by the consulting engineer slash independent inspector. Noise, dust, and air quality controls shall be in accordance with D E D regulations. Twenty, construction of the proposed driveways, parking areas, proposed drainage system, proposed water system, and proposed sewer system shall be supervised. By a registered professional engineer. Said supervisor supervising engineer shall certify in writing to the planning board and D P W. And completion that the proposed driveways, parking areas, drainage system, water system, and sewer system were constructed in accordance with the approved plans. And said systems are functioning in accordance with the approved design. Certification of the proposed driveways, parking areas, utilities. And utilities shall be accompanied by asphalt plans signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and a supervisor supervising registered professional engineer. Prior to issuance of. Occupancy permit for the building, a registered professional engineer shall inspect the exterior of the building as necessary and certify to the planning board. And the building commissioner that with his signature and stamp on an asphalt plan. The grading and stormwater management systems conform to that shown in the site plan review and V C N special permit plans. And are functioning in accordance with design requirements and any variation in grade is immaterial and does not. Period alter points of the stormwater system. The site development asphalt includes building structures, geography, roadways, water, sewer, gas, cable, biooptic. Electrical and storm drainage infrastructure should still be submitted in auto count format twenty thirteen or higher. Our E S R I interchange format registered to Massachusetts State. Plane mainland coordinates, North American, down of nineteen eighty three, compatible with the town system along with stamped and signed copies of said plans. Twenty one, all materials for utility construction shall meet the D P W standards. Twenty two, a street opening permit shall be obtained for each individual individual utility connection. Twenty three, permit shall be obtained by D P W prior to the preconstruction progress. Twenty four, A D A compliant ramps shall be constructed along new and old driftway at the closed driveways. Which ramps shall meet town standards and shall be in accordance with the site wings. Twenty three, signage and pavement arrows will be implemented to show circulation around the parking lot. One way circulation cannot be changed without any. Twenty six, the applicant shall eliminate. Twenty six, the applicant shall eliminate the existing driveway opening at the adjacent commercial property to new driftway. And add a sidewalk and a vertical granite curb to match and tie seamlessly with the existing walk and curb. Which work shall be in accordance with the town of Citewatt D P W standard and N A S D O T construction specifications. Saw kind of. And A D A accessibility max safety complex. Cast iron tile pads shall be used for detectable more strips to the town right away. This shall be completed prior to any occupancy permit for the site. Twenty seven, the applicant shall conduct weekly A M P and P hours, seven to ninety M and four to sixty M counts on the site driveways. For comparisons, site generations submitted to this project within six months of achieving ninety percent occupancy. For a week long five day period, should the counts be ten percent or more higher, the applicant shall conduct. Passage analysis at the old driftway within the intersection during A M and P M peak hours. With comparison to the projected intersection operations used in the study. If signal improvements or town changes are required, they shall be implemented within six months of submitting the traffic monitoring study. Twenty eight, the applicant shall obtain all necessary tools. For the use of town water prior to scheduling the preconstruction progress and end construction commencement. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the applicant's expense. Installation of water mains and entrances shall be performed according to the specifications of the D P W water vision. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be first, the town planner, by the applicant. Twenty nine, a determination of adequacy of the existing water service slash biodego for the proposed use shall be provided. By the applicant to the D P W and town planner, with their approval prior to scheduling the preconstruction progress. Prior to the replacement, must be reviewed, revised, as noted below. Separate connections via the domestic service to the existing, twelve inch water main required. The water service services that serve the existing building shall be identified on the plans. Notes shall be added to abandon the existing water services by excavating, closing, and cabin the corporation stock. If existing T V's are found, they shall be removed or replaced with twelve inch reptile iron water main installed sleeve coverings. The existing hydrant and the entrance of your place shall be replaced, all new hydrants shall be touted. The size of the proposed domesticated fire served water services shall be confirmed by the applicant. Sizes, domestic and viral lines to be provided on a revised plan to the plan. To plan prior to the application of a building permit. The existing condition indicates there is one existing water service feeding the existing commercial structure at sixty one driftway. That is connected to the existing water main or the driftway. The size and material of these seawater sources shall be shall be identified on the plan. The applicant shall confirm the size of the existing water main in new driftway as it passes in front of number sixty one. As the reference indicate that it is ten foot cast iron water main and transitions to twelve inch PVC water main at the intersection with old driftway. Fire flow conditions shall be calculated for the Weston and Sampson before. Flow tests and building type calculation shall be performed on which will provide protection requirements. The applicant shall provide a detail for a proposed two inch potable water service. All proposed two inch water services shall. Shall be either type K copper or quality C T S tubing. All services to be at smaller in diameter shall be installed with a curb stop. The applicant shall include follows to indicate the locations of the proposed curb stops. And how the proposed potable water will be connected to existing water mains with corporation stock, saddle, several. Advocate shall clarify on the plans how the remainder of the existing service not being reused is abandoned or renewed. Size and materials of existing water service shall be noted on the plans. If the existing water service is less than two inches in diameter and or made of material other than copper or quality C T S tubing, the entire service shall be replaced. All units shall be individually metered, no master meters are allowed. The typical trench details shall show the minimum required. The typical trench details shall show the minimum required cover to be five feet for the proposed water main and services. The applicant shall ensure the proposed four-inch PVC pipes and connecting the gutter downspouts are installed and elevated so that it is not considered proposed wash surface. The applicant shall include follows to indicate how the fire service will be connected to the existing main with the T or town sleep and to identify post gate down.
The third bullet point, third line down, all sorts two inch or smaller in diameter.
Yeah, we got that.
About that, correct.
The act thirty, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town sewer prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference and any construction commencement. Any required upgrades and modifications or connections shall be at the applicant's expense. Installation of all sewer mains and appurtenances shall be performed according to the specifications of the D P W division. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be first the town planner and the applicant. Thirty-one, all replaced or connection to town sewer, drainage, and installation water mains and appurtenances shall be performed according to the specifications of the city D P W with an independent inspector contracted or employed by the town to review the construction activity and assure compliance with the town's rules and regulations. D P W personnel must be in attendance for any sewer, drainage, and water infrastructure and apparatus work in the town in the town rights of way and on the project site. In addition, the following must be addressed to the satisfaction of the town sewer division prior to the commencement of construction with adequate notes attached to the plans prior to endorsement. And on permissions that newly constructed manhole structures, if any, will be vacuum tested and such testing will be capable by the applicant. Tests must also be witnessed by the sewer division and/or by the town's approved independent inspector. B, sewer permit costs in are in addition to connection fees at a rate of fifty dollars per residential and a hundred twenty-five dollars per commercial. C, expected sewer connection fees have been revised to reflect existing veteran status. Any additional units connected to town sewer shall infer privileged fees. The project is understood to be adding twenty-one point five sewer units consisting of twenty-two residential units, one three-bedroom, eight two-bedroom, and thirteen one-bedroom apartments and seven retail spaces. The current sewer connection fees are sixteen thousand dollars per unit with a one-bedroom apartment considered half a unit. The project will be assessed at three hundred forty-four thousand dollars in sewer connection fees for the additional units. D, an external cleanout for the sewer service will be required within ten feet of the building validation. Cleanouts shall be provided on all bins. E, all external cleanouts shall be furnished with metal to protective covers. F, minimum slope of two percent is required for sewer services slopes shown on the plan. G, PVC sewer pipe shall be S D R thirty-five. H, the privately constructed sewer infrastructure will be owned and shall be maintained at all times by the applicant. The sewer line from the property line is owned by the applicant. I, based on the noted inflows of a hundred and ten gallons per minute during well drawdown testing, the existence of F O G at the Heron Brook pump station, the applicant is required to perform light cleaning and closed circuit television, C C T V inspection of the existing sewer lines between S M H S T A two plus ninety-one, record drawing seven, C dash seven, file number one forty-three dash fifty-nine, and S M H S T A zero plus zero five E in Driftway, for drawing C one, file number one two three dash sixty-five, to better define current conditions of these pipes. J, existing sewer level must be cut and capped. And all joints and sewer services and sewer infrastructure shall be double wrapped with self-adhesive external PVC ten millimeter minimum or E D P M rubber wrap number millimeter minimum tape with a minimum of width of six inches. This is required for all six-inch pipe existing or proposed from the town right of way approximately an existing cleanout to the proposed building. L, applicant shall abide and asphalted sewer division once constructed. F, all sewer line work shall be done by a drain layer licensed town situated. Thirty-two, the building, parking, walkways, and required signage shall meet all applicable requirements of A D A, M, A A B, and city commission on these builds. Thirty-three, the applicant shall ensure that signs, landscaping, and other features located within the site triangle areas of the project, site driveways, and the intersection of New Driftway and Driftway are designed, installed, and maintained so as not to exceed lines of sight two point five feet in height. Thirty-four, all signs and pavement markings to install shall conform to the applicable specification of the manual on uniform traffic control devices, M U T C D. All pavement markings markings of the public shall be thermal blasted. Thirty-five, the applicant shall ensure that snow window windrows located within the site triangle areas of the project, site driving intersection of New Driftway and Driftway that exceed two and a half feet in height or that would otherwise be given site lines are promptly renewed. Thirty-six, snow storage areas have been minimally designed on site. Applicant shall provide snow storage areas on the model prior to endorsement. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel are informed of the storage locations. When onsite capacity is exceeded, an offsite location shall be used in compliance with the federal state and normal laws. De-icing and sanding agents can only be stored onsite if they are covered or contained. There is set a trash management shall be entered to the building. A dumpster is proposed. And the trash removal shelter is possible as needed if debris is not placed outside the covered fence dumpster, but at least by at least start with the basis. Thirty-eight, all electrical, telephone, cable, and several utilities shall be located underground. Thirty-nine, except for the tower bonus segments of the sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities included, including but not limited to the stormwater drainage shall be maintained by the applicant according to the post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan best management practices revised dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three by Morse Engineering Company Inc. and which are attached to this decision. The post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan best management practices shall be provided to all property owners and property management people. The post-construction operation maintenance and maintenance plan shall be revised as a stand-alone document prior to endorsement and includes going for conditions. Forty, forest payment areas must be vacuum swept and washed monthly. Infiltration capacity must be checked after storms. Sand shall not be used on the forest pavement and salt use shall be minimized. An annual certification and report shall be provided to the planning office by a registered professional engineer that all components of the post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan best management practices be practiced and adhered to. The surface is never to be resealed with impermeable materials in perpetuity. Forty-one, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditioned or stormwater is interfered owing to abiding properties of the street, stormwater authority can require all necessary mitigation to permanently remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities and services that survive the issuance of a certificate of completion to apply during all ongoing operations of the building and site. Forty-two, no separate stormwater permit is required as long as the site is built according to the approved plans and stormwater calculations. This approval and conditions constitute stormwater permit. Forty-three, inspections of all infiltration systems must be performed by the planning board's consulting engineer and the sign engineer prior to any backfill or system component installation to perform suitability of soils. Forty-four, electric vehicle charging stations shall be provided for three vehicles for use by residents of the development. Forty-five, no gated entry is allowed now or in the future. Forty-six, flow will fill will be required for any excavation in Driftway and New Driftway. Forty-seven, soil conditions at the bottom of the proposed infiltration area shall be inspected by the town's consulting engineer prior to infiltration devices being installed and backed.
Okay, affordability, forty-eight, all affordable units shall meet the requirements for inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory through the state's local initiative program, L I P, or other similar state-approved program in effect at the time of application. Forty-nine, according to section seven five four of the Zone Bylaw for projects receiving a density bonus, not less than twenty percent of housing units constructed shall need affordable housing. Five affordable units are required for twenty-two units receiving a density bonus. The units are distributed throughout the proposed housing units. There are three one-bedroom units, one on each of the first, second, and third floors. There are two two-bedroom units, one on the third floor and one on the fourth floor. All of the affordable units are reserved for tenants with income at or below eighty percent of A M I. Fifty, the affordable units shall be constructed simultaneously uh simultaneously with the market rate units. No certificate of occupancy will be, no certificate of occupancy will be issued for any residential dwelling building without the affordable units ready for occupancy. Fifty-one, the applicant shall be responsible for preparation of an L I P local action units application to be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, E O H L C, formerly D H C D, by the municipality chief elected official. Assistance will be available from the planning office. Uh erosion control and phasing, fifty-two, an erosion control plan with preliminary sequence of construction has been provided. Plans shall be followed and if changes are necessary, request them, request them to the planning office. No major deviation shall occur. Fifty-three, stockpiles shall be located as shown on the plans and must be protected with erosion controls, including but not limited to silk socks and temporary seating. Fifty-four, phasing shall be per the phasing schedule indicated on the plans. Fifty-five, there shall be full unimpeded access for the fire truck and ambulances without vacuuming out during construction. Fifty-six, the board of health, B O H, requires the property to be baited by a licensed exterminator two weeks prior to the demolition of the buildings and a report sent to the board of health. Fifty-seven, the construction operation and maintenance plan best management practices shall be adhered to and added to the plans prior to endorsement. Environmental conditions, mows and dust. Fifty-eight, site noise levels shall conform to the MAST D E P's Division of Air Quality Controls, noise policy based on condition shall be taken and submitted to the town planner prior to the commencement of any construction activities. Fifty-nine, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, three ten C M R seven point zero zero, air pollution control seven point zero one, general regulations prevent air pollution, and three ten C M R seven point zero nine U, dust odor, construction and demolition. Per three ten C M R seven point zero nine U, dust odor, construction and demolition, water must be used to prevent excessive admission of particular matter throughout the construction project. Sixty, the applicant shall not operate any concrete crushing machinery on the project site. Sixty-one, a dust control plan must be provided to the planning board and board of health for review and approval prior to the pre-construction conference.
Landscape, excitement, density bonus, and public realm improvements. Sixty-two, all changes to those requirements must be presented to the town planner for approval. The town planner or the planning board's inspector have the authority to approve minor changes or deviations from the sewer plans and/or any details, heat, lighting, signage, made in materials, fencing, or landscaping. All under change must be verified by the planner. Materials selection shall be provided to the town planner for review for compliance with the approved plans prior to implementation. Sixty-three, a separate sign permit shall be required from the building department for any freestanding signs unless otherwise accepted under the Zone Bylaws. Signs shall be fully located on the applicant's property and shall not cross sidewalks, trap entry, egress from the site. Any sign must be reviewed by the designer in due bidding prior to permitting. Sixty-four, the calculation for the by right density shall be added to the plan prior to endorsement along the correct setback stepback table through the Zone Bylaw. Sixty-five, a density bonus of ten units has been requested, not including the affordable units for the project. The planning board can approve this additional density by special permit if the applicant provides benefits to the residents of the project and V C N district and surrounding area. By number eleven, anybody the applicant has agreed to provide a contribution of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars to be used for repair, maintenance, reconstruction, and so to engineer of the pier in Driftway Conservation Park, which needs repair and maintenance, and is located in the area of the project and included in the task two thousand eighteen Open Space and Recreation Plan. This contribution is made in lieu of meeting physical requirements for density bonus under section five eight of the Zone Bylaw. The applicant has agreed to stipulate in express written terms or conditions that the funds may be expended as part thereof of the planning board without further appropriation. Use of the funds for specific pier improvements, maintenance, and the Driftway Conservation Park require approval of the town administrator, town planner, and planning board. If all funds are not needed for the pier, the planning board shall be requested to identify and approve a new proposed use or use of the remaining funds in accordance with section five eight point four, C point two of Zone City Zone Bylaw. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction. The applicant is also providing sidewalk improvements to town standards for approximately one hundred forty-one million feet in accordance with plan four of twelve revised dated six twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, with an approximate cost of forty-four thousand five hundred dollars to constitute the full density bonus for the project. The walkway must be completed prior to occupancy permit for the project. These density bonus improvements are made under section five eighty point four C of the Zone Bylaws. Sixty-six, the applicant considers contributing the sum of ten thousand dollars to fund traffic and pedestrian improvement studies in the Green Bush Driftway area as approved by the county. Applicants agree to stipulate in express written terms obligations or conditions of the contribution that the funds may be expended as part of part thereof by the planning board without further appropriation. Use of the funds for specific improvements require approval of the town planner, planning board, and town administrator. The applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction. Sixty-seven, all proposed lawns and square areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean screaming lawn. A bill of laying shall be provided to the town planner during construction to show that the lawn is clean. Sixty-eight, outdoor amenities spaces must be showed in type, size, and square feet and percentage of lot areas labeled on the plan prior to endorsement. Landscape plans shall not be used for this purpose. Sixty-nine, there shall be no lighting spillover to any abiding properties. Lighting fixtures shall be cut off slash downlight style. All fixtures shall be L E D and no higher than fifteen B. Lighting fixtures, details, and specifications shall be provided on the plans prior to endorsement. Seven, tree trees shall be a minimum of three-inch caliber and ten feet high, branching height above six feet. Seventy-one, the existing lawn strip stripped for the project shall not be spread back on the site if it contains invasive species, i.e. not really architectural design. Seventy-two, the building shall be constructed in accordance with architectural elevations and plans submitted to the project for the project. The quality of materials, instruction, and color shall not The quality of materials, instruction and color shall not substantially deviate from those shown on the elevations and discussed during the public hearing. Without the review and approval of the planning board. Seventy-three, the final building plans stamped by registered architect shall be provided to the planning department. Prior to a building permit being issued for review of consistency with the elevations and rentals described in the provision one. If the plans differ from the approved plans, approval of the changes by the planning board will be required. Seventy-four, detailing the exterior materials with emphasis on the exterior. And trim details and review of the locations of the utilities and mechanical equipment must be reviewed by the design view committee. With concurrence by the planning board prior to issuance of a building permit. They shall be concerted effort on the part of the applicant to design and install the majority of the H VAC equipment on the unit of the building. Seventy-five, well, reflectivity glass is required. Seventy-six, any fencing on site is required to be six feet tall. There shall be number seventy-seven, there shall be a minimum of two benches and two picnic tables located throughout the site, which are. Be field located during construction with approval of these locations by the town planner. Seventy-eight, calculations for gutter capacity, downspout sizing and height sizing shall be submitted. And approved by the consulting engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. Seventy-nine, a certificate certification shall be provided to the town planner and the architect. Prior to a certificate of occupancy that the building. As constructed are in substantial compliance with the approved plans. Are required prior to scheduling a pre-conference, a pre-construction conference. Eighty. Eighty, all the units are rental units. The applicant shall provide draft leasing documents for review to include A. A statement that the driveway parking areas drainage system sewer landscaping amenity spaces and other common areas shall be owned. By the applicant and shall be maintained by the applicant, shall not be the responsibility of the town to maintain. The driveway drainage system landscaping lighting, stormwater leasing system and other common areas shall be inspected, maintained and prepared. By the applicant, it shall also be stated in a note as plans prior to endorsement. B, a requirement that one, maintenance of the drainage system, parking, parking, driveways and landscaping shall be in accordance. With the post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan best management practices. Approved by the planning points consulting engineer. Two provisions for snow removal and maintenance, safe conditions through the winter of all vehicle and pedestrian ways has been provided and three. A description of the required annual maintenance of the driveway, parking areas, landscaping, lighting and other common activities. See a table of the number and general location of parking spaces a south. D, the revised post-construction phase operation and maintenance best management practices shall be provided to the planning board as a DM to the home document. Eighty-one, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall advise to the planning board. A, copy some of the reported site review and special permit plans. B, a check to cover the cover cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineer. These shall include a minimum. At a minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations section nine point oh for the driveway, parking areas. Walks and stormwater management systems, water system, municipal sewer connection and sanitary sewage line. New curbing and erosion and dust control measures as well as any specific requirements contained herein which may require review. And or inspection by the town. The specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on consulting engineers estimate. Shall be subject to amendment from time to time and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning board. C, construction schedule including approximate dates of installation of erosion control and other site protection stabilization. Construction of the building and all applicable items in subdivision rules and regulations section nine point oh and D. A type and amount of security provided by the applicant reasonably satisfactory to planning board. It covered satisfactory completion. Site and infrastructure features shown on the plan including landscaping, parking facilities. Drainage signs, lighting and related conditions in both by the board. The amount shall be based on the applicant contractor's estimate of cost of these items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer. And shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference. E, provide contact data. The site contractor, general contractor and twenty-four hour network will responsible party to the event of emergency. Required to start construction. Eighty-two, within two calendar weeks of the applicant's notification to the town planner that it intends to commence work on the project site. A pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicants and their representatives. Their engineer, the site contractors, the town planner, the town engineer and other D P W representatives as necessary. The police department, planning, planning board's consulting engineer and other representatives of the town as the board feels necessary. A list of contractor contacts including names and telephone numbers shall be provided to the planning board, D P W and police department. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in event of emergency. Eighty-three, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked flag for the field under the direction of a surveyor and notification. Give the town planner and consulting engineer a minimum of three business days prior to start construction. The property line shall be state of mind at all times during construction. Eighty-four, a stabilized construction entrance and silver. Fence slash stock must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on site including but not limited to clearing and rubbing. Construction fencing shall be required as necessary to comply with federal state and local laws. Required during construction eighty-five, construction workshop not begin prior to seven A M weekdays and eight A M on Saturday. Shall cease no later than seven P M or dusk whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state or federal holidays. Eighty-six, the void reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly or as often as necessary during construction to observe. And report on matters within scope of planning boards of the army. Eighty-seven, all working earth moving disturbance operation. Shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and approved by the town planner or town's consulting engineer. Such control measures shall be made in place until the boards of its own engineer determines after consultation with the town planner. And the danger of erosion or sedification no longer exists. Is the applicant's affirmative responsibility to ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater control measures. At all times during construction to ensure there are no increases in stormwater flow velocity volume. To a lot of properties at any time. A B A, construction activities on site shall conform with the town's treaty general by law. Eighty-nine, no sediment in the existing water shall be allowed to be beside during construction. Ninety, no parking or unload on driveway, new driveway or old driveway shall be permitted during construction unless in advance. And controlled at the same time for the user's part. Construction vehicles shall use the designated construction access on site. Ninety-one, all construction partners shall be on site and no other was included by the planning board. Ninety-two, the applicant shall notify the city police department forty-eight hours in advance of any significant equipment and construction material. Arrival to the site which may cause safety hazard or material disruption of the public way such that a police detail. Is necessary to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is at the expense of the applicant as required when each department determines if necessary. Ninety-three, the applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment or trucks to stage or idle on public roads. And shall not allow such equipment or truck while on site by the government. Police details may be required for construction access or work or final layout of the new driveway or driveway old. Ninety-four, the applicant shall provide the town with the routes. Construction traffic will use so that if a safety hazard or material disruption of public way impedes safe passage, a police detail will be obtained by the applicant. At his expense. Ninety-five, the construction acti- activities shall be conducted in a workmanlike manner at all times. Blowing dust one hundred three on the reef shall be controlled by the applicant through stabilization, letting down or other property storage and disposal methods. Ninety-six, no use hydrants on site or on adjacent roads off site is allowed for construction use. A hydrant may be available at the water treatment plant for use for construction use during non-water ban times. Ninety-seven, in order to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that emanates sounds from. From structures are stacked in proper working order through regular maintenance ninety-eight. Lasting if necessary shall be conducted in accordance with all necessary permits and the all requirements specified. Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Magna, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued that the planning board, building commissioner are satisfied. Buildings, driveway. Parking. Arrives and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with the approved plans and the site plan review and special permit. One hundred, prior to the application for certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract for inspections and maintenance of the stormwater system. Per the operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning office. One oh one, prior to an occupancy permit for the building on the site, the sidewalk in the right way of the driveway must be constructed. Down to the drew property. One oh two, prior to client for occupancy permit, the applicant shall provide A, a copy of an executed. Regulatory agreement between the developer, municipality and E O H L C to ensure long-term affordability. A of the proposed rental price of the affordable units. C, a drafty restriction to restrict the subsequent price of the affordable rating units to the applicable rental plans for units. At or below eighty percent of the area of the income A M I according to executive office of housing and livable communities. E O H L C in perpetuity. The drafty restriction shall be approved by the town council. By town council and proof of recording provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit for affordable units. D, a plan showing the location of the affordable units for the building and planning departments. C, E, excuse me, E, the name and contact information for agencies, companies and individuals who can. Will conduct marketing, hold the lottery and form modern. At a draft affirm affirmative marketing plan meeting the guidelines for approval of D H C D. The marketing plan must be affirmatively, affirmatively provided outreach to area minority communities to notify them. Of the availability of the units and must demonstrate the need for local products as well as to ensure. There will be no discriminatory impacts as a result of use of local preference criteria. If the plan does not meet D H C D requirements for inclusion of the substantive. Uh units of the subsidized housing inventory revisions will require a prior to occupancy permit. G, any changes to the affordability documents must be. Administration. One oh three, all found carriers' representatives' document for completion of condition shall be told in case any appeals are taken. One oh four, the site plan review and special permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded at registry deeds. Within one hundred twenty days of the expiration of the appeal period. Or such extension of that time period created by the planning board following approval of this special permit. The applicant shall provide proof that the special permit was recorded to the planning board. One oh five, the planning board may at its discretion waive or modify conditions of the special permit. At a duly called meeting of the board if the board determines that such a wake of an allocation is insignificant if it's not materially adversely. Affect the purpose of the special permit decision or is otherwise warranted. One oh six, this special permit shall last within two years from the date of issuance of a substantial use of construction. Has commenced prior to that time in accordance with vast general laws chapter forty A section nine. One oh seven, all plan sheets of the site plan review and V C N special permit shall be recorded at registry deeds. One oh eight, all construction work shall be done in accordance with plans. Failure to comply with any condition of this permit shall cause it to be deemed invalid. One oh nine, any condition contained herein that varies from the plan supersedes the plan where.
Seriously? I have one on page seventy-two.
Yeah. I think that should say, right, two, one for.
Yeah.
Right. Hmm. Well, Karen, one two.
Yeah, I'm gonna change that to E O H L. Anywhere it says drew, I'll change the skies now.
Okay.
Couple of things on sixty-nine and seventy-three, this. I think a bit of discrepancy from finding the facts. Uh, I think, and I would suggest somehow that this could supersede that. Because we're saying the fixtures should be no higher than fifteen feet here. I think the one in fact was twenty.
I'll verify what they show on the plan.
Okay. Normally, I think this three trees were two and a half.
Yeah.
Um, this is three, so I'm I'm fine with leaving it at fifteen three. Uh, we just might want to clarify that this goes.
Oh, verify, okay. I'm just concerned about the strip. I want the strip trees to have the correct branching height. Um, so nobody gets poked in the eye. On the bottom.
How do you designate that?
What you said.
No poking in the eyes.
Say a branching height, you know, above six feet. That that's kind of an industry standard.
Okay.
Number seven, okay.
But then you said that very correctly. Yeah, that's fine. I I'm really talking about no higher than fifteen feet.
Yeah, I'll I'll verify with the.
Three and a half.
I'll ver- I'll verify.
Um, and then number fifty. Second sentence, it says. No certificate of occupancy given will be issued for a residential dwelling. That's a unit as opposed to building.
Well, it's gonna be one C of all for the whole bill.
Okay. There's a mix of not on that one.
Yeah, there's next to none, so that that we.
Okay.
And so be one building permit, one C of all.
Then on thirty-three. Parenthetical. And they probably say no more than two and a half.
Okay, well.
Is that right? Do you do you see where I have?
I know. Number thirty-three.
Number thirty-three, the last parenthetical.
So they they can't, oh, thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah, they can't exceed to a half feet.
Right, I I just, that's what I'm suggesting because it just says two and a half feet, right, so. Now, nineteen. Now, nineteen. All right, going backwards there. Second, the last sentence starts forty-eight hours, and I think it can strike the word notice. So it says forty-eight hours minimum past those. There's an extra notice.
Yeah. I'll change owner above them to applicant.
Yeah. If that was it, Jim. Very good.
We have a little. I'm doing a job.
Nothing.
Yes, I just had a couple of clarifications Greg pointed out. Uh, the gates reference number ten, I think it's ten. Just to specify, it's the parking lot gate, not a lot, right there, but I think you, right there, it gives also number forty-five.
It is across the end, it's an exit.
Yeah, I think that's what it means, but it doesn't say that.
That's.
Just there's no gates allowed.
Gates are not allowed at the entrance or exit now or in the future.
Uh-oh.
Of the parking lot. I would just say the parking lot. And then with one of the references you have for the.
Though, um, before you leave that, though, not sure I understand what distinction you're trying to make, are you suggesting there will be gates to the entrances?
To the, like, for the building itself? No, no, it's not showing on the plan that way, but I think.
It's just, it's just doors, right?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay, so. Um, distinction without.
I think it implies parking lot, but I just thought it would be better clarification, because people other than us are gonna be reading this.
So add, just park no gated parking lot entries, now or in the future.
And then number twenty-six. I, I wasn't sure if I see the one I read, I actually thought we're going across the driveway for the SkySail properties for the, for the, uh, the extended extension of the sidewalk, and this is the applicant shall eliminate the driveway open at adjacent commercial property.
At the, at the existing site.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, so let's just put.
That, that's, that's add the entrance to the, the dance studio and stuff, right?
No, no, it was.
There's an existing driveway that they're going to fill in.
Yeah, I was wrong.
Move the driveway now.
Let's just say that should be new driveway.
Eliminate at the adjacent commercial property.
The applicant shall eliminate the existing driveway open at the existing site to new driveway and add sidewalk and vertical.
Yeah, that's fine, at the existing site, on new driveway, yep.
That's a great, the worst adjacent.
Were any plans made?
Oh, I gotta say, two.
Um, take that existing building down, erase it. Is that?
Yeah, that existing building is gone.
I know it is, is it? But there's nothing in here relevant to that, or does there need to be?
There doesn't need to be, except they, one revision that they have to require, um, dust, they had to bait it and they have to do.
They have to cap off the water lines.
Yeah.
Last thing, you have to be registered.
But it's a, the control, the concrete crushing.
Specialized.
There's a, yeah, there's a few things in front that'll have to be.
Whatever the board of health requires, they have to do. I think they do both. I've seen traps.
Like, do they give notice to people? There's little mice, go one half and, but also.
Well, I, I, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the farm replaced up there. It'll be long, but it don't get this.
Whatever the board of health requires, right? Uh, second is amended.
Salves favor.
All right.
I move to close the public hearing.
Our favor.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it, folks, good break, Bob.
Okay, just hold on so we can unmute everybody.
You're muted, you're good.
You have a session. No set? No, it's a three one, okay. So we have the eighth third, we continue public here, disciplining this way with you special permit. What says four months, we don't need to install water permit, you know, except my major district, let's take a building. Other village eight seven street. Generally, we're running two, you said, beyond that will. That was very good is here, and what happens to child play together, then we can call it up.
Great. By the way, appreciate the introduction, I'm Bill Warren, I'm here with Kevin Brady, who's our manager, and also. And one of the things you'll see here is, oh, I'm sorry, most of you will be going with. First, please, next, we show the doctors, you may change. In a nutshell, just procedurally. Where we are, you know, very dependent on design review committee relating to this revised. Developments. We have to back here in the number twenty, we need to be also doing for our next conservation, you know. Basically, what has happened here, it's become an asset right project, drop thirty-four units. Is three buildings as opposed to. The proposed. If I have four building, we're not seeing any identity bonus, special permit. Or anything else, just that it still remains rental units. We weren't able to, there's a lot of things that are assessed this now, there are six three bedroom units. I know man has his no risk, no fifty-five home restrictions on any of the buildings. There's more parking than is required, there is more. Subject capacity required, and we've increased the green space substantially. So with that, I'm gonna have Kevin Brady over where we are now. Concise, and then Jamie will give us concise thing, and then we'll answer any questions which would. Put down. Kevin?
Thanks, Bill. I'll go up to the board, they're online, they're all. Point. Kevin Brady, Brady Consulting, just gonna. Review some of the things Bill indicated. Major changes to the site plan include reducing the number of buildings from four to three. We had a building in this location previously, that's now been removed. We reduced the number of units from fifty-two to thirty-four. And remove the need for the special permit. We have reconfigured the driveway in response to peer review comments relating to. The slope of the entrance driveway and parking along that. So what we did is we eliminated parking along this, so the whole site rises up in countryway. To the rear, plateau as well here. But we need to get up to that elevation, so the way was sloping. At a little over nine percent coming in, and we had the parking. Perpetual to the entrance way. In order to eliminate that, we needed to add a road parking on the plateau area between building two and building one. If it's in well, we get nine spaces there, turnaround, easy access in, out, gives us some mobility. Initially, we had this drive, this parking lot entrance in this location. And we had the parking going back and forth this way. We needed, what we needed to do was push the entrance up the hill. So that we weren't so. It wasn't so steep getting up from this location. As part of this change, I also lowered the steepness of the entrance road. So when I, when I brought that down, it made this entrance that was here steep, so I needed to reconfigure that. The remainder of the parking pretty much stayed the same. We are proposing sixty-three parking spaces, requirement is fifty-three, gives us flexibility for various house mobility. One of the main points of discussion from the peer review is accessibility between buildings, parking lots. So we took a real close look at that. We provided accessible parking at each building, accessible parking right instead of the entrance, adjacent to building one. We have accessible parking just adjacent to building two. And accessible parking just in front of building three. Building two's accessible rope is directly upper ramp to the front entrance. If they prefer the rear entrance, this is also a flat entryway to the, to the rear entrance. They could also traverse all the way around the back to building one if they want. This is still steep, so this one section is not accessible. If they need to, it's drivable, or again, it's accessible via this. Ramp route here. Building one is accessible. From these parking spaces down the back. Into the rear entrances. And obviously, this is accessible directly into building three. Stormwater and septic, have there some outstanding issues and questions from the peer review? The configuration is essentially the same, it's all subsurface drainage. Spread out around the property, there's a subsurface infiltration system. Behind building three and north of building three. There's subsurface drainage system in. Between building two and three, we're gonna utilize this space a little bit more by removing. The old building. And there's also infiltration in front of building one. The septic system configuration is essentially the same as well. Retaining the existing septic system located in this area here. Take it familiar with this retaining wall there, that's an existing system, and then we're utilizing the. Cell side of the property for the septic system here. Each building has septic tanks, and we need to have a pump chamber. From building two to get up to this system once we lowered the rope. One of the reasons the road was where it was, is we were able to get to this septic system via gravity before. So eliminated that, load really comfy. And reduce the slope, we're still at eight, eight percent, but we're under nine percent. The. Amenity space, we've got a little over twenty-one thousand square feet in the amenity space, also distributed around the property. This. So seventy thousand square feet in this area here, there's a ten thousand square foot amenity space in this location. It's three thousand in here. And another thousand square feet over here. Those are the macro changes, I know we have some peer review comments that we need to address that came in last week. I reviewed them, outlined what we need to do to address them, I didn't see anything that was insurmountable. As far as the engineering. And I think that's, that's basically the, the major changes in the design, and have to take questions.
Thank you. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Where's the parking for building one, is that?
Correct, there's nine spaces here, and there's two here, because it's part of the field of the site, we're not able to put the parking spaces back where they are today. Actually, today, they are at along this entrance, and it's somewhat steep there currently.
So those, those, that's, I just was wondering.
Yeah.
Kind of looking around here.
It's not optimal, but you can, they can go either north or south to get to the building.
Mr. Brady, can you tell me how far back we're being to initiative street?
Building three. Two hundred, three hundred, three. Almost four hundred feet.
To the rear building one, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Four hundred feet.
Yeah, so we have thirty, twenty, hundred, twenty-eighty. Three ninety, and whatever, whatever that costs.
A couple of things. I see that you have in the above. With the trash. Right there?
Correct.
Well, that's a lot, that's a huge hike from building one and building two. What you think about that, that, that's a hike for people.
Where's getting its shape?
I don't care, it's a hike. Secondly, as we've taken out to Rebecca. The parking up on the existing septic system is above building one. And I know that they need to walk all the way down one side or walk the other way. Is there any thought to putting some type of stairs or whatever? In that green space to allow people to get down off that wall, aside from jumping?
I think we could probably do, do something like that.
I mean, really, I think you need to do. Accessibility is a big thing.
I just thought we could do something like that.
Great.
Okay. One of the items that was pointed out in the peer review that we. We can't submit in between receiving the peer review or getting to this meeting, but. Wall protection along this wall, we'll, we'll add fence, probably something decorative. So that people that. Up on this parking plateau are protected from falling over the edge, and we'll direct them to your stairs.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Finally, here from our peer review, and Mr. Ellison, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, good evening, members of the board.
How are you tonight?
Doing well, thank you. For the record, my name's Peter Ellison with TEC, I'm the peer reviewer for the planning board. Overall, I think this plan does represent an improvement over the previous version, obviously, one of the buildings has been eliminated, it seems that there's quite a bit of green space that's been added to the plan. That being said, there's still quite a few technical questions or comments out there that need to be addressed on the stormwater and the civil piece. Of the design. That I think we'll be able to work through over the next, you know, peer reviews, round of reviews. One of the, the items that was just brought up was that accessible path and the route that it takes around the site. It's, it's a little bit complex, the, the layout of that accessible design. I'm not a hundred percent sure, so it's something that I would probably defer to the town's building commissioner on to see. You know, if that circuitous route of the accessible path is acceptable or not per code. Another thing is, you know, I'm just looking for more detail regarding the retaining walls around the, the edges of the site. It looks to me like they could be fairly tall in some areas, like over four feet. And I guess it would raise the question of if those walls would be considered a structure, if there's some kind of setback from the property line that would be required for that, that type of wall. Would the board like me to get into the traffic review now, or do you want me to hold off on that, because it's kind of a separate topic?
Is there, is there gonna be anything from the, on and on the traffic, traffic, or is?
Traffic, who's already been submitted and reviewed.
Yep.
The traffic engineer wasn't able to.
Why, why not, Mr. Ellison, thank you.
You want me to run with it?
Yep.
Okay. So since the last hearing, TEC also prepared a. Review of the traffic impact assessment that was provided by the applicant's team. Overall, we generally agree with the, the scope and the way that it was prepared. We took a look at the study area, the, the intersections that were included in the study, and we agreed with them on that issue. The data itself, it appears that it was all collected properly. With traffic counts at, at certain intersections and ATR data. It looked to us like overall the study was prepared kind of in conformance with industry standards, the site trip, site trip generation calculations. All looked appropriate, the land use code for multifamily housing was used, which would be appropriate for this style of development. The only real issue with, that we found, and kind of the only outstanding comment that we have. Has to do with the site distance at the proposed driveway and the intersection with countryway. The applicant's team, you know, the, the traffic impact study states that they are meeting and exceeding the required stopping site distance. But in our opinion, the way that they're measuring that site distance from the driveway was incorrect. They were measuring their site distance from nine feet back from the edge of the road, whereas the industry standard is fourteen and a half feet back. In this case, at this driveway, it may be a challenging safety issue to overcome, because. If you're trying to exit the driveway and looking to the south, there's an existing retaining wall that obstructs your view. And prevents you from being able to achieve that required minimum stopping site distance at the driveway. So I know the applicant's team said that their, their engineer was not able to be here tonight, so. One thing that I talked with Karen Joseph about earlier was. We could potentially look to meet the town, town staff, and the applicant's team out on site to look at the intersection together. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page of what we're seeing, and hopefully come to a, a consensus on the issue.
Thank you.
We'd, we'd be amenable to that, it sounds to be a good idea, we did respond to that, the. Traffic engineer from Bonnass did respond to that comment. But let's look at it on site.
Mr. Ellison, what's your view, all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, do you want to, or Jamie, just a brief update from the architectural part, Karen?
Um, well. Why don't we actually have Jamie go first, because one of the things, I've only time about disagreement, and something that was mentioned in disagreement, so I think that.
Okay.
We should hear Jamie first.
Jamie Kellner was excellent, my confidence. Keep it brief, we have seen these two buildings before. As far as the. Architectural volume and all the essentially basics of the design have not changed, right from a couple. Window sizes and locations that changed due to the unit, interior of units changing, so. As you know, the building that was formerly in this location now taken away from the proposal, so. From architecturally, that was the building that was receiving sort of the most, you know, questioning on, on design and whether it fit, so. The previous look, just as a person was here, so that's. You know, kind of the change that we're proposing from the aesthetic, and you know, this view of me taking time from up. From a, you know, up in the air, practical view. And then. We have the designer new request, requested. View from the street, which. Is, you know, not meant to be a pretty picture, but just to give a logistical view. When we do create that view from down low, and we have post-site trees shown on the rendering. You essentially do lose most of the view of building. Formerly building four, now building three. From, from this point, looking down the driveway. There was the previous view that included the old building three. For the unit counts, we rearranged the interiors of buildings a bit, changed the bedroom counts. Building two now would have ten units with a mix of. One and two bedrooms, and then. Some three bedrooms, we were to add on the top floor, or floor. The back building, oh, sorry, elevations show that. Type requirements are easily being met on the building two, which is only a three-story. Back building. Now building three still has sixteen unit posts. And those have been adjusted to be a mix of threes and twos with only a single one bedroom unit on the first floor. That's, that's the very basic rundown. We've changed. What's the total breakdown, one, two, and three bedroom? So across all buildings. I haven't actually added host, but I do. So building, building three in the back is eleven twos, single one bedroom, and four threes. And then for the front. The building two with the. Two ones, six twos, and two threes.
So the, were we doing the front building?
Front building, yeah, it gets a reskinning, that would be in kind with the materials.
But you won't be able to change the interior?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's already got the renovation on the interior, so.
So nothing changes in building one?
No.
Bedroom counts on that, correct.
Why is there a retaining wall? That I gave you one?
The existing building, I believe, is there, which is, there's a retaining wall there now. Yeah, it's, it's a rebuild with existing stone. Trying to make that more decorative. Wall.
You go by it so much, you go through it.
I really would like to see you put in a sidewalk. I know you don't have to, but I really think that it would improve all of you. Put in a sidewalk, that it would be. It would be truly a plus to do that. I, I know years ago, Mass Highway was willing to build a sidewalk, town would come up with the engineering, but they said, no. The town, I think that it reached the point. For accessibility. You really ought to think about putting in this sidewalk.
So we have looked at that, and there is an issue as you get closer to the cohesive town line. If you look at, if you look at the road, it gets really close to the applicant's lot line, and there's not enough room to put it in the. Public way, you put it on private property, then we've got an issue there. And it's also running into some mature trees on the private property right at that intersection. Really, the best way to do the driveway is to kick the road over to the center of the way to, to make room for that sidewalk. I've looked at it a number of times, it's also a catch basin that's right there on the public property, I think that's why there isn't one in that location, so has it brings it right over? And then they said, no, there's a, there's an old stone wall that's on. The butter's property, our property, it's a catch basin, and it's big trees, you're, you're up against the. Street, just no room.
It's also a, it's almost a pillar.
Yeah.
That's right there.
It's a town, town monument.
Well, maybe when you're out looking at. The site just.
Okay.
Might be able to, like, think of something while you're out there at the spot, I'm just thinking that here, I think, well, if you're out there, if you could down, or if you're up to do. Well, if you could.
Okay.
And the other option is to seriously think about. With the crosswalk, having it go across the street. And have it go down to Mordecai Lincoln. And then cross back over to South Main.
So when you're out there, they can maybe open that.
So a sidewalk from this building to the train. There's a sidewalk in front of eight oh, eight oh nine, next door, and then.
No, not towards it.
No, not towards it, and then not so much train, it's not that. And we could put it there without too, too much trouble. It's something that was, was just never finished for the end of the year, which is a truly not efficient.
Thank you. I have a number of issues, and I do think that this plan is an improvement. I, I do think the plans, from the engineering perspective, need to have a fine-tooth comb gone over them. To eliminate the conflicts in the plans. But let me start with the, let me start with some issues. Water study, indicated that a water study was going to be required, no one's ever contacted me yet for the requirements for the water study. We're gonna need more peer engineering review money, the three reviews are done, the plan is changed, so we're going to need more money for that. You know what TEC has commented on the stormwater. Snow storage needs to be shown on the plans. How many bicycle spaces you're showing need to be shown on the plans, I mean, you show several bike racks. How many spaces, designing requires a certain number of spaces per cars, that needs to be identified. I think we need to get a little bit better idea on the fill. The landscape plan should be stamped by a landscape architect, and it's kind of hard to read in terms of the plant should be identified. Walls need a lot more clarity. On top and bottom, you know. What's on top, fencing, bywall, et cetera, that, they, they, it needs a lot more clarity. It calls for privacy fence in several areas. Well, I'm gonna suggest that all privacy fences should be six feet. I don't know where the split rail fence is versus the privacy fence, so that, that really needs to be clarified. I really think that you need to do what the designer review committee asked for the other night, I think we need some sections. Going through. The, the property at the cohesive town line. To show how the wall interacts with the existing vegetation, interacts with the, with the privacy fence and the landscaping and the proposed water line. I think a couple of sections through there would be very beneficial to try to figure out what's going on there. I checked with the Board of Health today, and they have been told not to review the plan yet, so that's. So we don't know where the septic system stands. You don't, you're not approving the septic system, but I would think you want to know that a septic system can work on this site. They have indicated tonight that the parking exceeds the requirements. I mean, technically, the bylaw says you're supposed to provide only what's parking is needed, is the board okay with them providing an additional ten? Extra parking spaces, it seems that it could be warranted for visitors, and maybe a good thing, but is the board? Okay with that, you should give them, you should give them feedback on that. The walkways, as Mr. Ellison has said, I've kind of asked the building commissioner for a comment on the. As the building commissioner is also the ADA opposite for the town. As the building commissioner is also the ADA officer for the town. I've asked him to take a look at the plan for ADA compliance. I think that that's something that should be resolved very early in the budget. Lighting. It looks like there's lighting spillover to. Into the street of countryway and to the adjacent residential properties. I think you should look at that again. The existing building is over a hundred feet. I believe that needs a special permit. I think you should need to go, you're going to have to be able to detail for previous pavement. I think we should go through and make sure that all the details pertain to the project. I don't think all the details pertain to the project because I don't think you have turtle barriers. And the turtle barriers on this site. I think clarify fencing types and locations, number of affordable units. How many affordable units are there for the project? Because I did not distribute a, a letter that came from Kevin Grady today, but. The letter conflicts with the plans. And so I think we need to get that straightened out. And I don't know if the board wants to talk about construction sequencing. De-watering, how, how this is going to be constructed. Is it all one phase or is it not all one phase? How they, how they're going to do it? I mean, they have a construction plan. But I just was a little confused as to actually how they intend to actually build it. And de-water it and, you know, with, with the base, with, you know, where you have underground drainage. That's my comments in the question.
Yeah, that's my, I received a couple of things from Austin and Kevin. Kevin's, Kevin provides narrative to talk to Karen about it. He can talk about the lighting, there's no still. But most importantly, I've heard one of the T E C comments under. Was about the front building, the front bill, there, there is no special comment necessary. The front building, I've already discussed this and confirmed this with the zoning enforcement. Pre-existing non-conforming building under forty-eight sections, seven of the state law. Is, is. It's grand final, that's it, period. Any other second for us? So there is no special.
I can respond to a number of those if you want, or we can just do it after the meeting in our usual peer review. Scenario.
We have one, it's a lot of interest, so why don't you?
So snow storage is shown on the roof control sheet, which is.
Which is, it shouldn't be shown there because a roof control is for construction. Show it on a plan that somebody can read and show. So somebody, no, we want where the contractor should, that's for during construction.
So I will create a separate snow storage sheet, no problem. Uh, bikes, bike spaces, I will do a calculation. And the, on the first sheet where the total number of parking spaces is, I will add that data. Uh, fill requirement, I calculated that, I will submit a filled plan. That's ready to go. That's about fifty-seven hundred cubic yards. Uh, there's almost no cut. So it's also, yeah. If we're doing, you know, a lot of it is stormwater and sewer, I mean, septic. If we're doing store, we could probably drop the site a little bit, but that's not a possibility for us at this point. Septic system needs a four foot separation groundwater and then you need some volume in the system, adding two feet and then you need a foot of cover. It's, uh, that's what's causing a lot of the elevation. Landscape architect did prepare the plan. This last version, we kind of had to squeeze in pretty quickly between design review and deciding to eliminate. Units and buildings. So we did not go to a fine, fine detail on this. We wanted to have a macro conversation with you guys before deciding how many flowers to plant in front of a building. We may or may not move. So we will in, improve the landscape plan and give you more detail on that. And some of the comments, that's. I almost suggested that we have this meeting without a peer review so we could make sure that the macro proportions of this makes sense. Before we drill down into the minutia. So that's where we are on the landscape plan. Uh, I've labeled the fencing throughout the, the plan. I'll create a fencing plan. Basically, the stockade fence is surrounds the property from all the butters. We, I noticed today that we did label the stockade fence five feet. I will adjust at the six feet. Our narrative does call out for six feet, so just an omission between the two. I can add sections. I probably need to review that with Karen to figure out exactly what that is. We do have existing and proposed surfaces. It's real easy for me to do. The hard part is. Trees, you know, a- adding the location of trees and where, where those cuts are to show what tree. Doing a section through the woods is, 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 is difficult. I've had some back and forth with the board of health. I did ask them to hold off until we had this meeting in case there was some sort of, uh, item that I wasn't aware of. I'll ask them to get that going again. Uh, they're well aware of this meeting date. Um, I did ask back and forth with them even after that, which was just last week. So I, I just said, hold off a week, let's see how this meeting goes. So that's what happened there. Parking exceeds the requirements. We need to have that conversation, what you, you think's appropriate. Obviously, we can comply with the parking requirement. Walkways, AD compliance, happy to talk with the zoning enforcement officer to, to address that. Lighting spillover, I will take another look at. Two areas. That I saw some spillover, I think will be blocked by the fencing. And then the other area that goes out on the countryway, there's already significant lighting from the butter that goes out on the countryway. The spillover is from baller lighting. There's no large lighting in the front that's going to impact. Countryway more than it's already lit in that location. These are decorative lights across the front that the lighting manufacturer showed actually what comes off. I can detail the forest pavement, no problem. Um, I will look for turtle barriers on the plan. There's a lot of details, a lot of pages. I'll find that. Wardable housing is five. I thought we had construction sequencing, but we can improve on that, no problem.
As far as parking is concerned. Uh, uh, I understand Rebecca's point about guests, but.
You think that's too much?
I do. I really do.
I, I would suggest that. That should be balanced against the need for. Septic system space and for. You know, kind of making sure that walkways were, all, all those things probably ought to be addressed.
One of the things, the extra spaces, sorry, Steven, sorry. One of the things, extra parking does help us when this comes forward.
I, I think you should give them an idea. I mean, how, if ten is too many. What might you be willing to accept for extra parking so that they have an idea of how, how to proceed?
I would say five. Meets the middle, five. Or what's required, one or the other.
Well, you need an requirement if they teach free, right?
Correct.
And I for extra ten, that's, that's scattered the both.
Yeah, I would say. There's a few places that. This row here is providing.
You have to have that one.
Yeah, this row and this is getting us here.
I think we could eliminate the five of the activity job. Lighting. Those.
I'll take a look in that. I'll find five spaces. Like, as I said, I, I think it does give. Multi-family site like this flexibility for visitors and it does give us some snow storage for winter. I, I'll take another look and see, and I'll review. Um, accessibility and where would we put the snow? And I'm also going to look at moving one of those dumpsters down into this. Section here.
The walk was like five.
Yeah, I'll, I'll remove five and we'll.
That's not a drop getting across.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I think, uh, I just talked to Karen, mentioned about the water report. We're in contact with, and there's one of the things I just want to talk about one minute, just, just Kevin said. Thing in this, but, but one of the things was. Very re- reached out to, uh, reached out to a few, uh, reached out to a few of them. And one of the suggestions we thought was an excellent suggestion was. Greg Morrison's team over at Project, uh, he's got a come before you for the, uh, the staple. In the adult today to learning. And, and he suggested that a consultant that be due to reporting in tandem with that. And perhaps save some expense relating to that. And then we were told, I don't know if it's true or not, that you will waive it. If their traffic requirement. Because they were nonprofit or something.
They have even been to.
We have, they have, we've had very interesting.
Disputious rumor.
They haven't called, they haven't filed any of this.
Sure, so we'll, we'll get that done, the adequacy. And also Karen aspired for criteria, assuming the, uh. The, the sorted project on, on, on dripway.
Yeah, it's the same, same.
It's the same criteria, which, yeah, so we already have the criteria and Kevin's with it.
And they're asking probably soon, so. I've reached out to others too. Good luck contacting engineers these days.
Well, you're all very basic, that's how the gentleman tell you, sure, very, yeah. Anyone else in the board have anything you'd like to say? I want to open this up to a couple of questions.
Ways to go here.
A long way. Yeah, we have a long way, yes.
Yeah, that, that, just something is, this is at, at least in the view of we, uh, asking applicants, so. Major reduction in density, eliminating things and this is kind of like, oh, and. The technical issues, kind of last best thing you can do under this bylaw. Keeping in mind is the why, why that, I don't know, move this bylaw. And all the, all the names that Kevin and Karen discussed. We'll address all these things, but just conceptually from the board. You know, with existing building, what we're doing in a nutshell is what we're adding. You know, we're adding twenty-six, twenty-six minutes, like all the other ones already exist.
It very much appreciated you actually appreciate that to upset.
Yeah, we've addressed that, eliminated fifty by all, like, really took. Key of, of the, uh, discussions, but. There's not a hell of a lot, there's not a hell of a lot different we can do, like, in other words, anything borders. Uh, it would be nice to get some type of feeling as, yeah, this is a good project, good reaction and all this stuff. But there isn't a hell of a lot different we can do right now, that's it.
There's not a lot you can do. It's, Karen said, right now, the devil is in the details, so we really need to see that.
Oh, we'll have it, there's zero chance we won't address it.
It, it isn't that, uh, I, I very much appreciate that. I've been, I've been, maybe this is like, I've grown eight, but I chime on seeing this between here. A design review, I very much appreciate that you've got a building. I, I, I know that's what that does and. Um, I, I don't think it is, I'm attracted, that's why I asked you how bad that your building was because I know that was an issue in design review. They wanted to have a piece of articulating building. Worth it. I worry all this for both the average, when you go to see architects. They want to articulate filter. Um, and fenestration is my favorite word, I do like that a lot. So they talk of that. So, but because it's so flat down. You know, I would have that same concern of, is for the public view, that maybe an architect will, yeah. But you can tell me it's four hundred feet on that driveway. Um, and it was a pill, I think. I went down reading today to, uh, my mind to see what you could see. Uh, I very much appreciate the redesign, knowing how, what people in the board do as well. And it's, it's very much appreciated and you, you've got it. How many of us was that doing?
It's a simple, it was a tremendous amount of baby. That's my only big concern is baby. Um, and then if we can somehow figure out. Access from that parking lot above building one. To. Parking, parking to the building. And, and we're all going to look at possibility of some type. Access park, sidewalk, whatever. I think that would be a real good bonus.
So you've heard obviously, you know, you had the last one, that was a year. From start to finish, almost exactly. Maybe a little more than a year.
More than a year.
So, you know, these don't go, as you know, once you do it, this take a long time. It's all a job to ensure that what comes in is the right fit for us. And sometimes it takes us a little longer than other times. Because this is the first of the type, but no, it takes a little longer. Because we have to make sure that we get it right. I will take questions from the audience about their, if you would, yes, Bob.
Just one quick one, this is a single lot, so this can't, this isn't a common driveway or. It can't be a common driveway or substitution.
So I, I will, um. Take comment, uh. It, it would be appreciated if we do not repeat ourselves, um, we know there are cases that will insert. So if you would like to speak to us, please raise your hand, we'll acknowledge you, please get your name and your address. Anybody in the room to look now?
Um, Captain to Shorty, Port Penine, South Main Street. We live directly adjacent to this proposed development. I did send a letter to many board and.
It was forwarded, yeah.
It was forwarded, yeah.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I, I found out that you needed it. So it did raise a number of complaints and I can understand if there is a long way to go. But every time I look at the plans, it's very difficult to really understand all of the impacts to our property. And some of them have been pointing out tonight, pointed out tonight, including a wall. Um, that's really not that long to, um. We were very happy to also see one of the buildings removed from the proposal. Um, you know, but again, you take one thing away and it to us in our direct impact, there's a new parking. So it's really right next to our property. Um, so we're concerned about landscaping around that area and noise and. Um, all the typical things of nuisance, even the parking and people going in and out every day and going to cars there. So, uh, you know, if you look at the landscaping plan, and I understand from Mr. Grady that might be changed or beefed up. I hope so. Uh, I think right now there's interruptions with the arbor, arbor vibes right around that area. And it needs more, the six foot fence is much better. So it seems like that's, that's in the works. But I do also want to point out a couple of things. We talked about a lighting plan briefly. But the lighting for that ADA walkway, you know, what is actually, was just. I, I haven't given that label, that label is, um. Not on that lighting plan at all. So, you know, that's right next to our property. So we want to make sure that there's, you know, that's dealt with because you didn't start. So we want to know how that impacts us. And again, that walkway comes on the side and clearly, Mr., uh, you know, your, your view, Mr. Allison. Said that the ADA hasn't even really been shown yet because there's a ramp there that is, that is too steep. There's also, if you're traveling along, you have to go right in front of building one. If you, you know, if you walk suddenly that to be able to be on level land. And so you have to kind of go all the way around the whole property to get to the back, if that's what you want to do. And in front of that building one. And so there's, you know, the existing walk that is mentioned, so. Uh, we'll be interested to see how that all, you know, pans out again. Sometimes, you know, um, the slope is still an issue. I mean, it's still eight percent. It's, there's no doubt. I mean, it's a problem, so. We deal with the slope on our driveway and it's, 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 it's no joke. It's a real, especially in the wintertime, it really is. There's a lot of water in this area in general. And so to us, it's a really big deal, um, that the, the streets are safe in the front of our. And so to us, it's a really big deal that the streets are safe in front of our.
Be assured, Mr. Jordan, we are concerned of our concerns as well.
Okay, thank you.
We, we take all of your concerns very seriously.
I appreciate your time.
If there's anybody online, what's the other case that somebody online for? If you're online, you want to speak, you want to raise your hand, we can let you in.
You can raise your hand on the bottom of your Zoom screen if there's anyone out on Zoom land that would like to make a comment or a public comment this time. I don't see anybody right now.
So anybody in somebody else in the room? Yes, sir.
Bruce Arvini's twenty three Gannett Pasture Lane. Give a tangential question, but.
Could I ask you to stand up, Mr.?
Sure. Yeah, Bruce Arvini to twenty three Gannett Pasture Lane. My question is about sewer capacity. Is there any chance the sewer capacity in town will be expanded one way or another for accommodate, you know, the commercial area which might.
That's a million dollar question.
So the party, the party line is that this project is on setback. They are putting in a line to be able to take to connect to sewer should sewer come. So I am told sewer will be coming in three to five years to Norset.
Actually, I said three to five years ago.
I ask all the time, what is the party line? Party line is three to five years. So that's all I know.
Cross eyed ass.
Yeah, use your color.
Right. We do have a question online.
Okay, I'll take.
Hi, sorry, I tried to figure out how to raise my hand earlier. My name's Olivia Falk. I live at three Gannett Pasture Lane Extension in Cohasset, so on the other side of the traps behind the proposed development. Also pleased to see that the number of buildings was reduced to three. But had a quick question about the revised plan for building three. It looks like it's over forty feet. So I was just curious if you had a plan to address that or if I was just looking at that wrong.
Are you talking about the height of the building?
Yes.
Forty feet?
Thirty eight. And.
Thirty eight.
The height, the height is better to the midpoint of the hall's roof.
Yeah, I just didn't hear what you said.
I believe it's thirty eight ten.
Thirty eight ten.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
All right.
Okay.
So that's what we say right now, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Somebody else in the room? Yes, sir.
Michael, linear fifty six Mordecai Lincoln Road. Delighted that the project's scoped down. Thank you. Just a casual, the whole tree line as it exists between their private drive or whatever. Could that just be left alone? I don't know. It's just a casual question. Instead of worrying about barriers and everything, the nice natural tree line, you've got mature trees. The sidewalk, most importantly, would bring the residents there to the train station. The little stub that brings us into Cohasset, it's a very short stub that if barriers and ancient markings and stuff prohibit it. But I think it's best to focus on going south to get people safely to the train station because that's what this whole thing's all about. And finally, with the trees that will be planted after uprooting mature trees. What can be done to make sure that they don't dry up and die like a lot of the trees that were installed? Parking lot at the train station, they were put in, they were never maintained, they dry up and they don't look so good, so.
Well, I can assure that we are much more vigilant about our trees in the immediate area. We go up looking trees all the time. That's, I'm finally going to answer.
Thank you.
I'm going to make somebody else, Mr. Jordan. Yes, sir.
Oh, we are thirty eight more time to go. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's fifty two units. Am I correct on that? How many units have they got?
Thirty four.
Thirty four. And the parking space is that for how many?
There's sixty three parking spaces.
So, so we're counting almost two cars per unit. Okay. So I want to know. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any else on line?
Is anybody else online? I'll take.
One more, one more.
Yeah, just briefly, thank you so much. You know, it's all might be think about it.
Can you just restate your name?
Yes, I'm sorry. Kathy DeJordi, Port Penine, South Main Street. Just in terms of the sidewalk in front of this development, you know, we have old wall in front of our house and also sort of in the quarter there and as the road turns around.
Mr. Brady had, that's why he said that was a problem. So.
Yeah, it is. But you couldn't, you don't, I mean, you don't have to go all the way to the wall, you never decide. I mean, it would be great, but you know, there may be options and some ways to look around that. But that really is part, I did want to point out that the wall was recognized by town to us as the end of South Main Street under Maccris as historical. That definition of South Main Street, you know, and that's the, you know, Massachusetts cultural.
You know, so we are aware of that.
Okay.
We had, that's what the things that we know that we have to work around.
Thank you so much.
So Mr. Brady, if you hope.
Well, just my takeaway, we can't be whipsawed. You have everyone around saying, we don't want a wall and interfere with this. We haven't proposed a wall. There's a number of impediments and so if you cut down trees, we're in a no win situation.
We'll make sure that you're not in a situation.
Well, I don't know if it's possible. It's like from a, about our comments, it's like I can assure that all our professionals would respond to the pounds, the boards, agents, these concern, but anecdotal concerns, we can't address these. They go on forever. And, and so, whatever, there's been an enormous amount of time, energy to do a project and it's a little disconcerting for my clients that it doesn't matter. It's everything that's good. And I'm not talking about the board, the board is, but but we'd like it if nothing was there. We'd like it if the existing stuff wasn't. We'd like it if we'd never created.
Well, we, you know, and we all deal with that every single day. We know that and we do our very best to work collectively to make sure that what's.
I understand the board, it might discuss.
I understand your frustration. Yeah.
Yeah.
You're frustrated. We will do the very best that we can, everyone. Not everyone will be pleased.
I understand.
We will try. Okay, that's all we can do.
I know we're going to walk the site, take a look at the sidewalk. We take a quick look on the site plan so I can show you what I'm running into with the sidewalk in front of the building. Now, we can see it at this scale from where you're sitting. This dashed line is the edge of pavement. I did put the, an aerial under it so you could see. But that edge of pavement really tightens up at this pinch point here. It's, and we can't connect to this sidewalk and keep this in, in the layout. Somebody's going to get hit at this pinch point. And there's a catch basin in this, at this location right here. We talked about doing a potentially crosswalk across the street. You can see two cars parked right here. This looks like their parking spot. I know it's on town property. But that's going to then impact these people who also don't have a lot of room, who are backed up against.
Hunter's pond.
Hunter's, what used to be Hunter's Pond, now it's a river. So I don't have a great solution. Really what has to happen is this road needs to be centered in the way. And we either need to do a taking or, I think the town really needs to be doing this, not a private entity. I've looked at it.
Well, 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 these are.
Yeah, definitely, we're exploring more. It's a good, well, in town, there's been no layout ever or anything else.
It's a card gap.
Huh?
It's a card gap.
Yeah, it's, it's nice. The, the whole country road is nice. It's just not built for sidewalks and bikes.
Yeah, we're not conducive to that. We know that. There's road we paid to, there's no roads. Anything else?
And we are set for now for the moment. Work.
Let's hold.
I will to accept the applicant's request to continue to public hearing, cycle and administrative review and special permit for, but it should be now three, three. Three multifamily buildings at Fomo and Cament in the Village Center and New York District, Norsetre Village District. Outer Village, VCN and, and BOB until January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. At ten minute time for action, file in town court until March twenty nine, twenty twenty four.
Your second.
Second.
Oh, paper.
Thank you, thank you. And what time on the twenty fifth is that?
December.
Yeah, the only thing I've seen that give the special permit that should be deleted out of the motion.
Asn't it? So.
I don't know, it's very late schedule. Are we? Yes. We have both. Okay, we have. Office room is as far as. I don't know. Works on every time. It's a real. So they can both refer to the collateral.
I will to repoint, call that a corner, draw a review term on the side of the committee. For a turn rate from November nine, twenty twenty three, November nine, close November.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we end the G A.
All right, so we have had another meeting with our consultant. We have one more on ever fifteen. We're definitely going to be able to go with fifteen units per acre. We're going to apply for the two mixed use districts. We're going to do the parking change and the affordability change that we talked about. We may be adding some definitions in as well. I've confirmed with town council that it's all going to be one article. All the O D and Q stuff will be one article and town meeting. And we'll do it as we've done in the past. We'll advertise it as, you know, it's going to be a bunch of subsections under a new article. But then we should hopefully by, well, by the time we workshop in summer, we hope to have the hot door, should have a word. We're working on a lot of wording right now. But it's, it's what we, what we've been saying all along, you know, you know, ten percent affordability for the V C N for the buy right projects and the apartment in the family for a mixed use district, you know, so. There's a bunch of housekeeping changes that will be done as well. That's the bottom line. Couple of chains in the table to, just to clarify things a little bit.
Should be interesting.
So can I just make about the trust statement that I know that we have a new communications director? And she has that the board is aware of this meeting. Why is it she be covering our meeting? Mr. Boudreau, I'm going to ask.
Is that the witness that sits in the back and takes notes?
Yes, a long woman.
I don't know who she is. Maybe she does some reporting, but we have no more thing or is that we bought anything about what goes on in this firm?
So David is this person who has a way to get out of vacation, get to tighten stuff up. I know she does select. We have given that, so if you.
You know, we can put on wings on here.
She's on baby. She's not making. She's in, she can.
All right, so here's the, three minutes. Want me to go for a minute?
Please.
Okay, hang on one second. What is, I don't know what to do with. I will to approve the min, the meeting minutes from October twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
Second. All in favor? I, I don't give a.
Oh, okay. All right, I will to approve the requisition of four hundred dollars to Tech Inc. Review Services, eight seventeen Countryway. Thirty four dollars, eight two cents to W B Basin for office supplies. For two hundred thirty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for theory new services for nineteen forty place. Three hundred fifty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for theory new services, five thirty three Countryway. Hundred and forty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for theory new services for six to one of the way. Two hundred ten dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for theory new services for County Way, residential compound.
Oh, just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have not watched any meetings, so I'm just giving you.
No.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Now we listen to, uh, Mr. Leader.
C P C is on Monday.
Okay, so C P C is on Monday. I will be there. On the square.
And then traffic rules is Tuesday.
Yes, and then. And the portal has to be just Wednesday. And then we have a meeting. And we have meeting Thursday. So that's important. And our meeting Thursday is at the library.
The library. I was thinking it was this.
Community room at the library.
Yes.
I was a little email.
Yes, I will thank you over time here. I was in the room.
I was thinking that while I was driving.
Not even.
Oh, yeah, we getting close to the agenda today.
Oh, because we can't see them at the other place.
Correct.
I will post the agenda on Monday and send everything out on Monday. I mean, you have to, you have accessory dwelling, any other water treatment plant.
But first.
So next Thursday.
Joy over. And I will listen to our.
We're, we're busy. We still have a lot of, you know, zoning is happening. We have a lot of, you know, accessory dwellings coming in, still have stormwater permits. The park in, at Pier forty four is going to have a shade structure and a board block. Is the board going to want a full site plan review on that or site plan later?
Review.
Review.
Okay.
The E N F.
I think we should spend the time on it.
Yeah, the E N F is on the street right now, so if anybody's interested, you know, you can look at the E N F on the second, you know, the legal website. I have a copy of it. I don't intend to make any comments of the E N F.
Do you think it's going to lead to a full E I S?
I'm not sure. They do need a chapter ninety one. They need a chapter ninety one, they need a chapter ninety one to take down existing building because that's in not permitted field tightlands. So I don't, that's a hard thing to say. They could. The project may be phased too, because they kind of want to drawk sort of too, but that would be, that would be a long ways away. All right, that's pretty much all I have tonight. Everybody's had a long wait.
Is there any news about seven hundred driveway? I heard he's shopping.
Well, I've had a couple of people ask me. So, you know, what's, what's involved is that is it condo or rental and you know, is the stock or drug tied to it? And I said, absolutely. So that's all I know. That's all, you know, that's all I know.
I mean, it's very.
Well, we have another year of this permit.
No, I thought there were rents. The condos.
Condos.
Another year on that.
Another year on that permit.
Has it been reported?
Has it been reported?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say, you know, that?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, yeah.
As, maybe it's on secretary at work, so.
Yeah, I just go to the people, I just try, try to go to me, but, but things should be there.
Thank you, anybody else to discuss, I'll show them.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.